School Board, can I have a board member certified closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law. That only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Can I have a, a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Mrs. Chen.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. All right, I will turn it over to Dr. Kiefer for a superintendent's report, followed by three reports from board members.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. This evening, I wanted to start off with a look back at, gosh, October twenty-second, which seems like a month ago, but it wasn't. It would just happen to be the day after our last board meeting. Families gathered for a literacy night, shared pizza and dinner activity before children ages two through eight had an interactive story time. And the adults were led by Dr. Robin Moore, who shared the science of reading and strategies to support literacy at home. Approximately eighty participants attended, representing all elementary schools in bright beginnings. There were also several non-school age siblings who attended. Our special thanks to the library for co-hosting and supporting this event. You've heard me say that literacy is not just a school division conversation, but it's a community one. And activities and events like this promote additional awareness. Speaking of additional awareness, wanted to remind the board, as well as our viewing public, of the Read to Ride Reading Challenge, which happens through the end of next week. Pre-K through and elementary students are challenged to meet their nightly reading goal. Pre-K through grade two, read or be read to fifteen minutes a night for ten nights. Grades two through five, read or be read to twenty minutes a night for ten nights. We're asking folks to be sure to turn in their completing reading log by Friday, the twenty-first of November, for a chance to win one of dozens of bikes donated to us in partnership with the Walmart Distribution Center. Incredibly grateful for their willingness to help us with this. To make it easier to get reading minutes in, we're offering virtual story times. That information is available on our website if you wish to register. Again, thanks to Williamsburg Regional Library and the Walmart Distribution Center for helping us on that project. Get those books read. Upcoming Family Academy, helping students thrive. We know that every child at times faces challenges in class with friends or managing his or her emotions. On Wednesday, November nineteenth, there's a Zoom conversation at twelve PM or six PM about how our school division and community partners support students' academic and emotional growth. We'll share what families can expect from the student code of conduct and highlight practical resources within the school division from the community that are available to help every one of our children experience a level of success. In Family Academy, next Wednesday, the nineteenth, twelve and six are the times for that event via Zoom. And finally, I want to thank the hundreds of service members connected to the WJCC community for their service to us and our country. Some of the pictures that you're seeing are from today, as our students had an opportunity to learn firsthand what it meant to serve our country. We are appreciative of those that are serving in our hallways and classrooms, uh, who are now serving as role models to our students, as parents, neighbors, mentors and volunteers, and even those who are continuing their service by way of the school board. Your sacrifices cannot be measured, and we can only begin to express our appreciation through a one day of recognition. Sincerely, thank you for service. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. Um, Ms. Chen, would you like to give a report?
Sure. Um, I just have a quick report to share, uh, just some updates from, um, CAC. So we kicked off, um, our, our sort of first official meeting last month with our welcoming our newest members. And, um, the committee, uh, nominated and voted on our new chair and vice chair. Just wanted to share that they, um, decided that they wanted, uh, Mr. Michael Willen to, who is sort of advocate extraordinaire in our community, um, and, and volunteers in so many ways. But he will serve as the chair of our CAC committee for a second year. Um, he's been a longstanding member, um, and advocate, uh, for CAC. And, um, and I believe this is a first, um, the committee, uh, voted to have our student, um, committee member, who is a current Jamestown High School student. She will be serving as our vice chair on our committee. So our CAC member has a student who's in leadership. Her name is Sophie. Um, so if any of my board colleagues, um, you know, I'd love to introduce her and, um, and you can congratulate her on, um, stepping into this leadership role on our CAC committee. Um, so looking forward to, um, you know, a, a new year with new members. And our next meeting is actually tomorrow. Um, so if anybody wants to, anybody here or anybody in the community would like to come and just be a part of that meeting. It's five to six thirty in, um, room one oh eight in the central office building. And, um, the other thing that, uh, the committee members wanted me to share is that in a couple of weeks, when we all attend the VSB A annual conference, um, CAC, in partnership with the special education, um, leadership, Ms. Cruz, Dr. Thomas and Dr. Newby, uh, and also with our community partner, the ARC, uh, will be presenting a, um, a session at the VSB A conference. Um, so, uh, hopefully you guys can attend and support, um, that effort.
Ms. Chen, you're also on the presentation team. I noticed that you did not. And I know this is your report, I'm sorry, but I noticed you did not reference yourself.
I am a part of the presentation.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that we're all on the same page.
Yes, yes, as, as I believe a board member needs to be part of it in order to have it be presented to other board members, so, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Uh, Mr. Hosang, you had something?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, I had a meeting with the New Horizons Regional Education, uh, Center since our last meeting. Uh, we had a presentation by the Center for Apprenticeship and Adult Training, um, during that, uh, during that meeting. And we specifically had an individual from the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, the IBEW Local thirteen forty, um, talk to us. And he was, he mentioned basically how much of a head start that those individuals received from that apprentice training, uh, through our, through New Horizons then out in the public. Um, and he was, he basically shared stories where there have been individuals who have taken the training through New Horizons, worked, uh, with his, um, company, and then have to be, uh, resettled someplace else or move someplace else, but they can take that, um, apprenticeship and use that to other places around the country. Um, so he said that's a, a very important thing that most people don't realize. Um, so that they can take the, um, the, take the training here, hopefully stay in the area and work. Um, but if they need to move, they can take that training and use it elsewhere. So that was, uh, a great, um, information. We also had, um, information provided, um, by the Good Life Program. Uh, these are the individuals who are students, um, who attend New Horizons and then get, potentially get job offers at the end of the year. Um, they gave us the stat, well, first of all, over the past, I think it's five to seven years, they, we've placed over five hundred students, um, or graduates, I should say, into positions, um, uh, in the local area. And the stat that they wanted to highlight was that after one year, eighty-five point four percent of those individuals have retained their position. They were still in the position after one year. Um, and they put it out that says, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, um, states that among jobs started by young adults aged eighteen to twenty-four, sixty-one percent end in less than a year. So the pro- program that we have going on at New Horizons, one is great for the, uh, students, but it's also great for the, the companies because they are retaining those individuals, um, in, in their position. So they wanted to highlight that and, and mention that to the students that, hey, look, you come to New Horizons, you can, uh, learn a trade and then keep, get a job in the local area and the training that you receive is very beneficial for them, so.
Thank you. Mr. Riffle, did you have something?
Ms. Madam Chair, I attended a WHRO meeting on October fifteenth. Uh, we had a presentation from Sail Two Fifty, which is a part of the Virginia Two Fifty, um, celebration and which is the America Two Fifty Celebration. So we're, we're focusing a lot here in our state. Um, so we talked about how their youth involvement in sailing, uh, which will be mostly in the Elizabeth River, um, a lot of partnerships between Hampton and, and some other sailing groups out in the Chesapeake Bay. Um, WHRO talked to us about their new app. We have the WHRO Plus, which has all five of their public media channels on it. Uh, PBS is on it and stuff like that. So things people all know and love. They talked about their, um, award ceremony they have for the Darwin Award, which they're going to give to former Secretary of Finance Aubrey Lane. And then they talked about the Ken Burns event they ran here in Yorktown, which is a part of the Virginia Two Fifty with the twelve-hour documentary, and they just showed up an hour of it, um, but on, on the battlefield at York, in Yorktown, which was pretty cool to see this, the pictures of it. And, um, I had some friends and family went to it, so, pretty awesome. And then we did talk about, with the financial hardships of the things going on in Congress. Um, they have rescinded the funding bill for FY twenty-five, twenty-seven, and it's made it pretty tough for public media outlets like WHRO, which consistently produces education media and public media across the state. Uh, they've identified a two-point-four million dollar gap, um, after the rescension earlier this summer. They ran a campaign to raise about two-point-six million, so they're definitely doing okay, but that's only for this year, so. Um, they did tell us that fifty-five percent of their, uh, budget is staff, so they're looking to see what they can cut. Um, and before they start doing that, um, into the spring, so, but the current climate doesn't seem to be willing to open themselves to fund public media, so the WHRO is taking that as precaution. And we're just gonna see what happens. Um, they still have a bunch of their resources still available, even though they're, they are not fully funded into the next year, um, because they are required to by the state with the E Media Virginia Newsletter, uh, the E Media Forecast, and then we also moved one of our meetings, um, to March seventeenth, so that was not originally planned, but we talked about some business, so. That's that, and that was the meeting. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. No other reports? Okay, we will move on to five point zero one, um, FY twenty-six, ten-year enrollment projection update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we kick off, uh, some of our planning related to enrollment projections, enrollment estimates. The data that we share with you this evening helps us better understand current and future facility needs, as well as being a key driver in the budget development process. WJCC has worked with Future Think for a number of years. Joining us this evening for the presentation is the President of Future Think, Tracy Healy. Tracy, welcome.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight and talk a little bit about the enrollment, um, projections moving forward. Now, I've been here a long time. It's been a little bit over twenty years that I've been working with the division and have been so happy to provide the enrollment projections as, as you move forward with your planning efforts and educating students. Um, this first couple of slides I have are, um, from the National Council of Education Statistics. And they look at public school enrollment for, um, K-12. This first map is looking from the fall of twenty-twelve to the fall of twenty-two. They haven't updated yet, um, this year, um, so this is a little bit old, but um, still wanted to provide it because what we're looking at here is the change in the enrollment by state over that ten-year window. You can see for the Commonwealth of Virginia, um, it has remained fairly steady over that ten-year window, um, which is why it has the, um, pounder hashtag sign there. But you can see all of the states that are in this light blue have declined, um, or, you know, between five and zero percent. And then those in the lighter blue have, are five to ten percent and, or five percent or more, I'm sorry. And then those in the darker blue are areas, um, within the country where we've seen, seen some increases. But there really haven't been a ton, um, the biggest increases are, you know, out west in the states of Utah and Idaho. And we can kind of see, but again, all of the, um, the growth has been fifteen percent or under fifteen percent for, um, for that ten-year window. They also provide, um, projections. So this is looking from the fall of twenty-two to the fall of twenty-thirty-one. So over that ten-year timeframe, the, um, Commonwealth is projected to decline by about seven percent overall. And again, we can see, you know, all across the country, um, rates of decline primarily. And then a few states here, again, Idaho is projected to increase by eleven percent. Um, and some of these darker blue states are also projected to increase between zero and five percent. But again, just wanted to provide that to give a little bit of context, um, in what's happening and what's projected to happen over the period of time. Oops. So, um, in terms of historical enrollment, over the last ten years, um, in WJCC, we've seen a decrease of two-hundred-and-eighty-five students over the ten-year period. But we've also, just from last year to this year, saw a decrease of two-hundred-and-thirty-three students. Um, and we can see about a hundred and thirty or so were at the elementary level. And this is really due to that fifth grade. Last year was eight-hundred-and-fifty-six, being replaced by a kindergarten of seven-hundred-and-fifty-one this year, so there, there's like a hundred and fourth, five students right there. Um, so again, as we're looking at these projections, you're going to see a little bit more, um, less increases than we've seen previous, in previous years. Again, um, you know, over that ten-year window, we saw a dip back in twenty-twenty during our COVID year. Um, then we saw some rebound in terms of enrollment. And then, you know, through last year, and then again, as I mentioned, the decline from last year to this year. We look at it in terms of grade groups, again, you know, um, the elementary, which is this orange bar. Again, in the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year, we saw that dip and then started to see some rebound again. Um, the high schools, this, um, middle line here, really didn't see a dip in, um, twenty-twenty as much, but, you know, pretty straight line over the ten-year frame. And then similarly for the middle school with, um, grade six, grade in the gray line. Terms of looking at the projection that we did last year to the actual enrollment this year, the, um, low projection that we did was actually a hundred and ninety-nine students too high. So again, we really, you know, last year, we had projected just a slight decline from last year to this year. But, um, what we saw actually was a bigger decline, so little, um, a difference of less than two percent, though. So we move forward. Terms of the projection methodologies that we use, um, primarily rely on the cohort survival method, which is just measuring the number of students that move grade to grade, year to year, over a period of that ten-year time. And then look at, um, developing projection ratios to determine the future. And then we also will look at housing and looking at how many, um, single-family, multi-family building permits have been issued and evaluate trends to determine the potential number of new students, um, based on that new housing. Terms of the enrollment projections that we provide each year, we actually provide four sets. They are by grade, by school. Um, there's a most likely, which has traditionally been used for planning purposes for far out. The low projection, which traditionally is used for budgeting, and then a moderate and a high projection. The most likely projection typically falls between the moderate and the high, um, as we move forward. So in terms of the projections, the most likely projection, we have an increase over the ten-year window of one-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-seven students. You can see at the elementary level, just a little over two-hundred students, uh, almost three-hundred students at the middle school level, and, uh, let me say, about four-hundred students at the high school level. So in the twenty-thirty-five, thirty-six school year, we were just projected to be just under thirteen thousand students. Terms of the low projection, we have a decline of eight-hundred-and-seven students over the ten-year period. At the elementary, about two-hundred students, um, about a hundred and sixty, seventy students at the middle school level and little over three-hundred students at the high school level. So in that ten-year period, um, a projected enrollment of ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-nine students. For the moderate projection, we, um, projected a s- increase of four-hundred-and-sixty-three students, so fairly flat enrollment projection, um, again, at the elementary level, forty-five or seventy students, about two-hundred, a hundred and fifty students at the middle school level and little over a hundred students at the high school level. So pretty flat in terms of the moderate projection. And then the high projection has this, um, just over thirteen thousand students in the twenty-thirty-five, thirty-six, um, school year, so about three-hundred-and-forty students at elementary, about four-hundred, little under four-hundred students at the middle school, and about seven-hundred students at the high school level. Again, as I mentioned, we, um, in the report that you all received, there are also, um, projections by school, um, by grade as well, for each of the four sets of projections. So in terms of questions, I'd be happy to answer anything for you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Ms. Healy? Any comments? Dr. Kiefer, anything you want to add, or?
I don't, we, we will have a presentation a little bit later to help the board be aware of what our current enrollment is and maybe where some of the students have left us to go. We've got that under for, uh, information a little bit later and want to walk the board through that, so you have a, a pretty firm understanding. But I, relative to the projections, I'm not sure we have other items to offer.
So I would think that for, for the purposes of redistricting, which is where we're probably all thinking, this is a decent scenario because we, we're making space and we're moving, you know, potentially moving students around. But that shouldn't change drastically once we do that. Is that a fair assessment?
I think so. There, there's also probably a, um, a little bit of a methodology difference between the, the way that Future Think develops their projections and enrollment projections and what we've asked the company that's helping us with redistricting do. We will, in December, present to the board some of the initial look at, uh, trends in terms of, of students and where those students reside with respect to redistricting. So I, I think in general, it's helpful for this information. This really guides us in terms of the next steps with budgeting and how we're going to approach the next fiscal year. And potentially, do we need to look at other building projects or expansions?
Okay. I did see a finger from Ms. Hunley.
Yes, I have a question. I often get, um, concerns with the growth in Stone House. And yet, houses are coming up, but the, the report is stating that it's going to be steady. So how do you, how do we explain to people that see all these new housing developments, um, coming up and not know, knowing if kids are going to be in those houses? How do you determine that?
Yeah. It, it, um, when we're looking at the projections by school and we have, you know, we've projected with a most likely, just kind of a slight increase at Stone House. Um, we've seen, you know, some increases, um, but it, they've been very moderate over the ten-year period at Stone House. So we're trying to determine, you know, what those, um, what the building permits are and as, in a kind of yield factor, if you will, for, um, the number of students. So again, you know, over the last, you know, four or five years, we've seen an increase of about forty students at Stone House. And we're projecting that to be, you know, closer to about fifty or sixty with the most likely, um, projection moving forward. So again, we haven't seen a lot of, um, new students coming in from new housing. And that's really kind of been a trend, um, across the country as well, where the number of students, um, you know, on average for, uh, if we have like a hundred single-family building permits issued or under new homes, we could expect about thirty to forty students coming out of those. Where in, you know, prior years, we were seeing closer to like seventy-five. So that had, in terms of the number of births going down, um, family sizes getting smaller and with the housing, um, inventory being, you know, kind of what it, what it has been in terms of, you know, people staying in place longer instead of seeing like that turnover at homes from older, um, family or, you know, empty nesters selling to new families, that has also declined dramatically. So we're just seeing, you know, kind of less new students as a result of all of those factors.
I think it's also fair to mention that Stone House has been over capacity for a number of years. So any, from our perspective, any additional students, students at Stone House make it further complicated to address their learning needs, which is part of the reason that there are two, three portable classrooms? Four portable classrooms plus one? Four portable classrooms, so eight, eight classes are meeting out in, in portable spaces at Stone House.
So then, so essentially, what you were saying is even though we are seeing new building and some, some new families moving in, that's not that, the rate of that is not faster than the, the students were graduating and the families who are still staying here with graduated students?
Right, right. It's just that rate is dramatically declined.
Okay. Okay, well, if there are no other questions for Ms. Healy, then we will say thank you for joining us, and thank you for your report.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Tracy. Take care.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item six point zero one, review presentation of fiscal year twenty-seven through thirty-six Superintendent's Proposed Capital Improvement Plan.
Madam Chair, thank you. This will be a, a presentation that This will be a presentation that Ms. Ewing leads us through. I will have a couple parts towards the end of the presentation, but in this particular iteration of the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan, we have begun to look at projects differently as a result of the recently signed joint agreement between the three bodies. And you, you will see things broken down in terms of where we believe capital programs need to occur, capital projects need to occur, and Renee will walk us through that, and I'll make some comments as we go. Renee?
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, I'll be sharing with you the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years '27 through '36. This plan outlines our long-range facility needs, funding priorities, and adjustments made based on maintenance cycles and cost considerations. Included within board docs, you'll find a spreadsheet detailing the recommended 10-year plan for your reference. Any additions to the current adopted plan are highlighted in blue. Amounts highlighted in orange have been updated. Amounts highlighted in green indicate a change in fiscal year for a project, and projects highlighted in yellow are projects that were added to fiscal year '27 due to non-funding in fiscal year '26. Each project presented tonight includes anticipated architectural and engineering costs, a contingency reserve, and cost escalation across the five-year period at a rate of 6%. These factors help us plan realistically for inflation and design costs that often change between proposal and construction. You'll also see new projects appear in this year's plan based on new information, such as updated building condition assessments or shifts in our refurbishment cycles. As a reminder, our funding partners adopt a five-year plan, but we develop a 10-year plan, which enables the Division to project and plan for future needs beyond the initial five years, and gives our funding partners adequate time and opportunity to prepare and budget for capital projects. As funding is appropriated annually, tonight, our initial focus is on fiscal year '27. We will review any modifications, additions, or deletions from the previously adopted fiscal '26 plan and highlight notable updates across the full 10-year outlook. Our 10-year enrollment projections were just shared by Ms. Healy this evening, and before we discuss the CIP plan, I would like to review our enrollment projections from last year in comparison to our current year enrollment. Our September 30th, 2024 enrollment was 11,379, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of 11,345 to a high of 11,833. Our actual enrollment for this year ended up less than the low projection at 11,146, which is represented by the blue horizontal line on the graph, an overall decrease of 233 students as compared to last year. This slide shows a comparison of our high school enrollment compared to the projection. Our September 30th, 2024 enrollment was 3,074, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of 3,0817 to a high of 3,0991. Our high school enrollment ended up just below the low projection at 3,804, which is an increase of 30 students as compared to last year. This table shows Future Think's low projected enrollment as it compares to the Division's capacity for high schools. Lafayette is currently at 91% capacity or 1,199 students and is projected to gradually decrease over the next 10 years. Jamestown is currently over capacity at 1,298 or 107% capacity and is projected to remain above 100% through fiscal '29, then start gradually declining for the remainder of the 10-year period. Warhill's current enrollment is 1,0315 or 91% capacity and is projected to gradually decrease over the next 10 years. Overall, high school capacity is currently at 96% for the current year with a gradual decline expected. This slide shows a comparison of our middle school enrollment. Our September 30th, 2024 enrollment was 2,0681, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of 2,0591 to a high of 2,0680. Our middle school enrollment ended up below the low projection for this year at 2,0552, which is a decrease of 129 students as compared to last year. This table shows Future Think's low projected enrollment as it compares to the Division's capacity for middle schools. Overall, middle school capacity is currently at 82% and is not expected to reach 90% until beyond the next 10 years. Based on this, phase two of James Blair would not be needed until beyond this 10-year plan. This will be reevaluated each year as updated enrollment information becomes available. This slide shows a comparison of our elementary school enrollment. Our September 30th, 2024 enrollment was 4,0924, and based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of 4,0937 to a high of 5,162. Our elementary enrollment ended up at 4,790 students, and this is a decrease of 134 students compared to last year. With the preschool centers currently under construction and anticipated to open in fiscal year '28, this chart shows Future Think's low projected enrollment for elementary beginning in fiscal year '28 as it compares to the Division's capacity for elementary schools. This table reflects updated capacity for the elementary schools with the current pre-K classrooms being utilized beginning in fiscal '28 for a K2 class, which would accommodate 20 students per classroom. Comparing this new capacity with the low enrollment projection from this year, elementary schools would be at an overall capacity in fiscal '28 of 82%, and will continue to stay under that capacity through fiscal '36. As you can see, without redistricting, Matthew Whaley and Stonehouse are anticipated to be over 100% capacity in fiscal '28, and DJ Montague and James River are anticipated to be at 92% and 96% capacity respectively. With the opening of the two pre-K centers, there is not a foreseeable need for a 10th elementary school over the next 10 years.
Wanted to touch on an item that we have added back into the CIP for fiscal '27. It's the idea of creating a turf playing surface at Cooley Field. That has been in our CIP for a number of years. It started in the outer bands of the CIP, probably in year six or seven, and continued to move forward till we included it in the fiscal '26 plan. Unfortunately, that was not funded in fiscal '26, so we've moved it back into fiscal '27 and believe firmly that turfing Cooley Field provides a pathway for our student athletes to have gated competition space, as well as an opportunity for our students at James Blair Middle School to have space for health and physical education classes. We think this is an essential component in the CIP, and I wanted to highlight that
As I shared earlier in the presentation, the locality is focused on projects for the next fiscal year, and our construction estimates are gathered the year prior to funding. Estimates provided for any projects in years two through 10 are placeholders and may change because of natural economic forces like inflation, labor shortages, supply chain issues, or other factors that persist longer than anticipated. Cost changes for projects in fiscal year '27 from the adopted '26 amount, total 271,000, is outlined on this slide. The most notable change is the metal roof replacement at Stonehouse. The original 2020 estimate was escalated at the standard industry rate of 6% with the belief that it would be sufficient. However, the most recent review by Mosley Architects reflects changes due to economic and market forces post-COVID with an increase in the cost estimate of 872,000. The playground repair and replacement line is also being increased by 250,000 to allow for universal access to our playgrounds to ensure all students have the opportunity to benefit from unstructured play. And the field lighting at both Stonehouse and Toono have been removed from the plan to support the turfing of Cooley Field. This is a decrease of 1 million. Here you will see some of the modifications to the 10-year plan, which include moving the middle school activity tracks from fiscal '27 to '28, adding design funds for the roof replacement at DJ Montague in fiscal '30, adding a roof replacement for the flat roof at Blatton in fiscal '31, adding a roof replacement for the auxiliary gym at Jamestown in fiscal '31 and '32, which aligns with the HVAC replacement. The capacity expansions at Jamestown and Warhill have changed, with Warhill now proposed first as a career and tech ed center. This would allow us to expand our career and technical offerings. And funds previously included for a new central office in fiscal '34 and '35 have been moved to fiscal '31 and '32 for a refurbishment of central office.
Let me, let me touch on those two specifically. First, the Warhill expansion piece. The, the idea, as I've listened across the community and talked with students and community members, board members, is that we, as an organization, need to have a stronger pathway for our students to receive career and technical education opportunities in our locality. We believe strongly in the New Horizons program. It is a phenomenal program. It is also a program that necessitates our young people spending nearly 90 minutes in the car every day, 45 to and 45 from. And I think it also, because of the, the mechanism and the model, doesn't allow for all of the students that, that we have that want to experience those kinds of learning opportunities to take advantage. So it, it is our suggestion that we bring in some form of career and technical education center to our campus. We believe that Warhill might be the right place for that and feel like it's in time for a community conversation around additional expansion of that programming at Warhill. The other piece, and as a result of that, we have shifted the Jamestown expansion out a couple years. You'll recall from the slide that Renee previously showed that our high schools are over 95% in terms of capacity. The, the Jamestown expansion may very well be necessary as we get into the outer years of the plan, but we feel very strongly about moving Warhill up and looking at some way to address those student needs. In terms of the central office change, the, the initial design around the central office here, the James Blair campus, was that when the middle school was expanded, that these offices would be torn down to facilitate that expansion. With the projection of middle school enrollment not needing additional space at James Blair, we do not foresee the need to expand James Blair in the near future. This building and the building next to us, the two-story building next to us, need some refurbishment so that we can continue to maximize synergistic influences and capacities among the staff that support our schools. We're not asking for new buildings. What we'd be asking for is a way to better utilize these buildings and to try to ensure that perhaps there's new flooring, perhaps there, some walls are moved so that we can take better advantage of that. We brought this within the, the five years of the plan to begin the process of thinking about that and considering that. I think that, does that wrap us up, Renee?
I think so. In addition to these modifications, there are also projects added in the latter years of the plan based on our established refurbishment and replacement cycles for HVAC refurbishments, flooring, and roofs. The CIP document presents projects by school, and this pie graph shows the breakdown by type of project. HVAC projects account for 38.6% of the total five-year CIP or 41.5 million. Refurbishments, roof replacements, and other repairs account for 18.3% of the total five-year CIP or 19.7 million. Other projects, which include things such as bus canopies, field turf generators, and school bus replacements, account for 22.7% or 24.4 million. And new facilities, which includes high school expansions and a storage facility, account for 18.3% or 19.7 million of the total five-year CIP. The superintendent's recommended five-year plan totals 107.5 million, with 5.3 million requested from the city of Williamsburg and 102.2 million requested over the five years from James City County. Some of the major projects included in that five-year plan include turfing Cooley Field, centralized storage space at operations, and HVAC replacements at Hornsby, Blatton, Warhill, Stonehouse, and Clara Bird Vapor. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Mrs. Donner?
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. I'm curious on slide six that has the projections for the high schools with the low projection, and then slide, whatever it was, 10-ish, 12, where we have the, the expansion of, side 13, expansion of Jamestown moved from 30, 31 to 31, 32. So does slide six is capacity projection reflect an expansion in 31, 32?
The capacity has not been changed for 31 or 32 to reflect that expansion, no ma'am.
So then, just out of curiosity, if we have a, if there are space in other high schools, why would we do an expansion if there were other seats?
We may not need to. That would be something that we would want to really look at carefully as the redistricting proposals come forward.
So it's something we should be considering of how to rebalance potentially high schools so that we don't have one place that's over, oversubscribed in some other places?
That are undersubscribed.
Undersubscribed. And then, and then spending from a fiscal perspective, spending additional capital to expand something that's oversubscribed when there is space in other places?
Yes, ma'am. I think that would be a worthy conversation as we get into the, to the next iterations of redistricting. The, the initial redistricting process was driven by our need to discover elementary capacity as a result of pre-K, but as we talked about in the spring, we will be providing the board and the community options across all three levels.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Riffel?
There's a question for Mr. Snipes, because he has a topic coming up later that, the solar expansion projects, typically roofing is sometimes a part of their, like, initial bids, like, take care of the facility in which the solar panels are on. Is there any, like, cost estimate from Dominion in the contract to kind of deal with this $21.9 million? Yeah, I'm jumping the gun a bit on the next section, but I know this is, I don't want to ask this later if it's on the projection now, so.
Yeah, so if I understand you correctly, you're asking if Dominion has in their plan how to deal with roofs?
Like, cost of roofs? I mean, some people pitched, you know, we see a lot of different RFP groups and stuff that say, like, they include roofing and, like, when the solar panels are up for 30 years or 25 years, they maintain the livelihood of that roof?
No, their, their, their proposals, which PPA, did not include replacing any roofs. However, they will work with the OEM, the equipment and manufacturer, to determine if roof warranties will be, be able to be incorporated into the installation. So, and it's based on the ideal age of the roof and when it's scheduled to re-replace. So they have not included anything in their proposal for replacing roofs.
Okay, thank you. And I'll save you the question during your section, so. Thank you. Time's up.
Any other questions? Mr. Hesse?
In regards to slide 10, and this probably goes a little bit to our future discussions on redistricting or relocating students, the effective capacity, can we get the effective capacity for the building? It's out, and, and let's just use Stonehouse. Get the effective capacity for Stonehouse building itself, not including the trailers? So we've got, we have an idea of?
These capacities do not include trailers. These, these are the building capacities as we are currently utilizing the rooms in each school, and these capacities assume that the current rooms utilized for pre-K and the five schools with pre-K, those rooms would be converted to K2 classrooms.
Okay. And then on slide 13. When we're discussing the career and technical ed center for Warhill, for, I guess, new buildings, have we looked into the possibility of current vacant buildings in Williamsburg, James City County? I know it may not be right on school property, which is ideal, what we would want, but has that been looked into for maybe a cheaper option to bring this to Williamsburg, James City County?
Sure, I think we're just starting. I, I think that there may be some possibilities in our community to facilitate not building a brand-new building. At the same time, often, that comes with a lease, that comes with a scenario that you may not be able to have full control over in terms of it being a building that belongs to you in terms of your inventory. So I think that part of our rationale for putting this into the CIP within the five-year window is to drive the conversation around how do we get this accomplished within our community. From our perspective and initial conversations, I don't think we- From our perspective and initial conversations, I don't think we have a specific line on any one type. But I do believe that we need to really look at the, what the options are. And how do we create that programming opportunity within this area?
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, we will. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe there's a public hearing on, at dirt, at the meeting or prior to the meeting next Tuesday. On the CIP and then that we would position the board to vote on the superintendent's CIP at your December ninth meeting. Uh, with a joint meeting happening that Friday preceding your vote.
Right, we will move on to item six point zero two, review of secondary program of studies for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Thank you. This, this is also is, it, it is amazing to me that we have really just ended the first marking period. But we are now full into planning for the next school year. And the program of studies conversation, the projection conversation, the CIP conversation. Is really us looking forward to what are the next steps that we need to take as a school division. Uh, Ms. Walter and Ms. Mompoint are here this evening to share some specific recommendations around the program of study and help answer questions that you have. Uh, Jessica, you're.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Kever. It is our pleasure to present to you tonight the program of studies for two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven. Tonight's proposed revisions and updates reflect our continued work to increase opportunities to students. And provide a user-friendly and relevant resource to our school community through WJCC's program of studies. This resource is designed to support our students and their families as they consider which courses, programs and options. Offer the best path for, toward achieving their goals. As you can see here, the program of studies aligns with WJCC's strategic plan, Elevate Twenty-Eight. And specifically supports the key priority of academic achievement, college and career readiness and educational equity. As we begin our presentation tonight, we would like to thank the multiple stakeholders and groups who met, reviewed information. And provided input over the last few months to develop the program of studies proposed this evening, some of whom are here tonight. Thank you. Additionally, it is important to note that any new courses added to the program of studies have been reviewed through the new course proposal process. Which includes an interdisciplinary committee review and considers impacts on staffing, facilities and other courses within the content area. When we review the program of studies, it is helpful to review the overall course selection and registration process. To ensure our school community understands the importance of each step of this process. On the slide above, we have shared a visual representation of the course selection and registration process. Which highlights the importance of student input in creating a school's master schedule each year. Beginning in January, students will choose courses based on their academic, personal and career goals. These requests inform WJCC to create a master schedule so students can take classes of interest to them. And then hire staff based on those student choices. Students then take their courses the following school year. It is important for students and their families to thoroughly consider their course options throughout this process. And make requests based on their interest and goals as changes to these requests are not guaranteed after the process has been completed. As we move through the presentation tonight, it is helpful to remember that the program of studies is the first step in this process annually. The program of studies is a key resource to students and families when making these decisions. In tonight's presentation, you will see changes that reflect updates to the program of studies with the user in mind, providing more clarity whenever needed. Overall changes and updates to the program of studies include minor grammatical changes and course description updates. Updates to the overall WJCC Secondary School section to provide increased details on processes and programs. And the addition of ten new course offerings, increasing opportunities available to students. This year, we are excited to include the updated New Horizons CTE and Governor's School program information as well. It is important to note, though, that this information is reviewed and approved by the New Horizons Board and unable to be changed. We will move through the changes and updates being proposed for the program of studies this evening. And you will find these in summary form within the summary of changes chart provided to you. This chart identifies all proposed changes for the program of studies this year and includes the page where you will find each of these changes. If a page is not included within this chart, then no change is being proposed for that page within the program of studies for two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. It is also important to note that any page number referenced in the program of studies will be updated with the correct page number. When the full document is finalized. To begin, I'd like to start within the using the program of studies section at the beginning of the resource. Within the general information and terminology section, beginning on the first page, we have made five overall updates. Within the description of career and technical education or CTE. We have added agricultural education to the CTE strands to reflect all available programming options for students. The next two updates are both related to changes being made to the course selection and registration process. The term add drop, which has previously been used to describe the period of time at the beginning of the school year. When secondary students are able to request schedule changes is being updated to now be termed schedule correction period. This change reflects the intent of the timeframe to be used to make necessary adjustment to schedules based on corrections that are needed. An example of this could include a student who took a course over the summer. But it is still reflected on their schedule for the school year, requiring a schedule correction. It is important to note that students will be provided with windows of time to request course changes prior to the end of the school year. For the following year. While we are not able to guarantee all requests can be accommodated, they will be accepted during the announced windows. The next update includes a change in the term identified within the repeating a class for strength description. To align with the high school scheduling structures. And the final change within this section is within the work-based learning description. Here, we have updated the name to high-quality work-based learning and have made the necessary updates to the types of work-based learning available. As well as the description. These changes align with the new high-quality work-based learning structures provided by the Virginia Department of Education. Within the middle school program on page six, we have updated the description of the gifted education program. To provide more clarity on our local plan to the school community. On page seven, you will see changes to the high school credit-bearing courses taken in middle school section. To remove the listing of specific courses and focus on the options available to students and families regarding the expungement process. As permitted by code. Also on page seven, we have added social studies and science to the content areas available in honors level coursework at the middle school level. This year, WJCC is proposing six new honors level middle school courses, three in science and three in social studies. Which Ms. Mompoint will share in further detail upcoming in the presentation. On page eight, you will see an update to the accelerated math description. Here, families are provided with information on WJCC's process for identifying students. Who may benefit from an accelerated math path. As well as how a parent or guardian can request that their child be reviewed for math acceleration. These changes reflect the updated policy IGBJ recently approved. Within the middle school program, we have also updated the language related to Virginia State assessments. By including the SOL students will take in the eighth grade on page nine. Within the high school program section, beginning on page nine, we have made updates in multiple areas. First, within the dual enrollment description on page nineteen. We have added language regarding the Uniform Certificate of General Studies or the UCGS. The UCGS is a certificate offered through the Virginia Community College System, specifically Virginia Peninsula Community College for WJCC. That allows students to earn what is comparable to one year of transferable college credits. WJCC and VPCC have an agreement in place that outlines this option and courses that meet these requirements. Within this section, we have also updated language regarding the format of dual enrollment options. To more clearly share that students could take dual enrollment courses in any or all of these formats. Beginning on page twenty-three, we have made updates to the experiential learning section. To change the individual internship courses to an overall high-quality work-based learning description in alignment. With the updated definitions and process provided by the VDOE. On page twenty-four, we have made updates to the gifted program description. Which matches the updates made to this section within the middle school portion of the program of studies. And on page twenty-five, we have added the acronym GST. To the New Horizons Governor's School for Science and Technology name and description. To align with common references made by students and the community. The final change being made within this section is within the description of the WJCC Learning Lab to correct a spelling error. This concludes the overall updates and revisions for the proposed program of studies. Ms. Mompoint will now move on to share specific updates to course offerings and descriptions at the secondary level.
Good evening. At this time, I'll present updates in middle school offerings and descriptions. In middle school programming, there was an update to our upper elementary and middle school math sequence chart to provide greater clarity for families. Under World Languages, for the introduction to World Languages course and in all World Languages Level One courses. There were minor updates to the course descriptions. This year, we are pleased to put forward the addition of Honors Science and Honors Social Studies courses at all middle school grade levels. You will find these new courses on pages thirty-two through thirty-six. Expanding Honors Courses into Science six through eight and Social Studies six through eight will strengthen academic pathways for middle school students. At the middle school level, both Honors and Non-Honors Science courses follow the same core standards. But the Honors Courses provide greater depth, rigor and enrichment. Honors students engage in more complex, open-ended investigations, use advanced lab techniques. And apply higher-level reasoning and data analysis to real-world problems. Instruction integrates math, engineering and technology tools with students demonstrating their learning through research, the research reports. Presentations and design challenges. The goal of the Honors Pathway is to strengthen critical thinking, creativity and scientific literacy. Preparing students for advanced coursework such as AP and dual enrollment in high school. Honors Social Studies courses differ from the standard curriculum by emphasizing deeper analysis, higher-level reasoning. And authentic engagement with historical and civic concepts. While all students study key US history and civics content aligned with Virginia's standards of learning. Honors students go beyond foundational knowledge to evaluate multiple perspectives, analyze primary sources. And construct evidence-based arguments. They participate in advanced projects, debates and simulations and research that requires synthesis across history, geography, civics and economics. The Honors Pathway de- develops critical thinking, persuasive communication and civic literacy. Preparing students to think like historians, economists and policymakers and to excel in future advanced social science courses. I would like to begin the high school course update, starting on page fifty-one of the program of studies, of the program of studies. As a reminder, you may follow along with these changes on the summary of changes chart provided to you as a quick reference guide. Tonight, I will, will review updates and edits made to high school courses within the English, Science, Social Studies, World Languages and CTE Departments. I will also provide an overview of each new course under these departments. We are pleased to share that we have reviewed staffing allocations and certification requirements for each new course. And our current allocations will allow us to staff each course. In English, we've updated our English Course Sequence Chart to, to provide greater clarity for both students and families. The revised chart helps families better understand the progression from foundational English courses to advanced and AP level options. In AP Seminar Ten, the course description has been updated to include the course's preparation for the writing SOL. And in AP English Language and Composition, we've removed the language related to dual enrollment. The course and description for College Composition One and Two were updated to provide clarity related to dual enrollment credit. The most exciting update is the addition of a new course, Advanced Placement Research. This course is the second course in the AP Seminar Series. Students who complete both AP Seminar and AP Research will demonstrate exceptional college-level research, writing and presentation skills. AP Research allows students to design and execute a year-long independent research project on the topic of their choice. Culminating in a present, in a presentation and oral defense. This course not only strengthens critical thinking and inquiry, but also provides a platform for authentic, student-driven learning. In Chemistry, there was a minor update in the course description. And in Virginia and US Government, this course was updated to include the dual enrollment option. I am excited to announce the addition of a new social studies course, Judicial Review. Judicial Review is an advanced course designed for students who wish to pursue careers or have an interest in law, government or public policy. Students simulate the role of judicial clerks by conducting in-depth legal research, drafting case briefs. And judicial opinions and supporting mock judges in trial and appellate level cases. The course emphasizes advanced writing, critical analysis and oral communication skills. And includes a capstone project where students present a mock Supreme Court opinion in a judicial symposium. Students will also mentor peers in Law and Debate and/or Law and Society, strengthening leadership and mentorship skills. The skills acquired through this course prepare students not only for college-level pre-law tracks. But also for exploring career pathways in law, government and public policy. In World Languages and beginning on page eighty-eight, all AP course descriptions and titles to include AP French Language, AP German Language. AP Latin Virgil, AP Spanish Language and AP Spanish Literature. Were updated to directly reflect the titles and descriptions from the College Board. Transitioning to CTE, for Veterinary Science One, there was a small grammatical change. And in veterinary, in, and in Veterinary Science Two, we removed duplicate language regarding student fees. In addition, you will see on the summary of changes chart, the language regarding cooperative education was, was removed from nineteen courses. Reflecting the changes to the hot, to the types of high-quality work-based learning structures from the state that Mrs. Walter shared earlier. Finally, in three of our courses, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, Sports and Entertainment Management. And Digital Visualization, updates were made to the course name. Continuing with CTE, the course descriptions for Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow One and Two. Were updated to include information on an available dual enrollment option. In addition, for Intro to Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, grade levels were removed from the course description. Finally, as a part of our continuous effort to expand career-connected learning opportunities. We're excited to introduce two new advanced placement courses within our career and technical education program. The first new course is AP Business with Personal Finance. This course merges traditional business education with critical personal finance competencies. Students will gain an understanding of key business concepts such as entrepreneurship, management, marketing and economics. While also mastering financial literacy skills including budgeting, investing, credit management and responsible financial decision-making. This course not only prepares students for college-level business studies, but also helps them build essential life skills for financial independence. Moreover, it aligns with Virginia's graduation requirement for economics and personal finance. Allowing students to fulfill that requirement while earning AP level credit. The second new course is AP Cybersecurity. This course introduces students to foundational concepts and digital security, data protection and ethical computing. Preparing them for both college and workforce pathways in one of the fastest-growing career fields. Students will engage in problem-solving, hands-on simulations and risk analysis exercises to understand how cybersecurity. Impacts individuals, businesses and national security. This course also supports Virginia's emphasis on STEM and computer science integration. And gives students an early opportunity to explore high-demand, high-wage technology careers. This concludes the review of our course updates and new courses. Mrs. Walter will now review the course request timeline with you.
Beginning in January, when we return from winter break. School counselors will begin classroom and individual planning sessions with all of our rising sixth through twelfth grade students. This year's curriculum fairs will be held on January fourteenth for the rising ninth through twelfth grade students. And January fifteenth for rising sixth through eighth grade students. Also in January, school counselors will be facilitating transition planning by providing lessons for all of their feeder schools. Our course request window for the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven school year will open online. For all rising sixth through twelfth graders and their families on January fourteenth and closes on February sixth. This concludes our presentation on the program of studies for two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. We welcome any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walter and Ms. Mompoint. I don't know if anyone was, uh, tracking page numbers. But are there any, any questions or comments?
It's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Mrs. Donner? I was gonna say, also, I'm very impressed and overwhelmed with all the new courses. For me, I just, how do we help families when we say we'll help them with their students? Let's say we have a single mom, works two jobs, kid's not really... How do we help them pick those courses that might be challenging but also exciting for them, so that they just don't get into basic, you know, just a basic track? Like, so that they can take advantage of the veterinarian or whatever? So, how much of it is the children have to show interest? And how much of it is that the counselor knows that child well enough to know that, hey, you didn't sign up for this, but I can tell you like to debate, maybe this law thing is good for you? How do you balance that?
I think it's a combination. It's definitely a partnership with multiple staff at the school level, but also with everyone in the home as well. And so, holding events like we do with the Curriculum Fair, we include parent sessions in there to make sure that the adults in our community understand the process, what graduation requirements are, what it will look like when their child goes into select classes, and then individual meetings with the counselor and the student. We also really encourage our students and their parents and families to reach out to their children's current teacher. They see them in the classroom every day, they work with them on that content to really talk about, here's what we're thinking, what are you thinking when it comes to the next year's course in that content area? But certainly, our school teams also take a look at who has signed up for what, and maybe who hasn't signed up for something that we think that they would be really good at challenging themselves for. So it's a team effort, and it's not just the counselor and the child, it's really holistically the administration, the teachers, the counselors, and then, of course, the parents and the students themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Mrs. Donner, you looked like you might have had a question.
Yeah, and I would, if I were probably a high school parent, I would know this, but are there... Are there certain, maybe in middle school, but I've heard like there's certain tracks or classes like your kids need to take to be able to set them up for like a higher-level math or something like that? Is that true? And are there, how is that communicated, or how do you help kids figure out that long-term planning?
Do you mean for certain college admissions? Yes. So, it is dependent upon the college, but those conversations do happen, especially with counselors and parents and their children individually as well. I should have shared this before, but we also invite families in to have those meetings. And with the introduction of Zoom many years ago, that has only increased the opportunity to have those meetings with parents, so those who may not be able to drive away from work to get to the building have had easier access with hopping on a Zoom or a call to join that meeting with the counselor and the student. So we, when we're working with kids, we ask, we talk about, what are your goals? What long-term are you thinking about? We really start that process in seventh grade when we develop the academic and career plan for the first time. But that aligns with, okay, this is your goal, what does that mean for college or whatever training program you may need to go into for that? And then those conversations around what math you need to take. So certain colleges have minimum requirements in math, some will have world language requirements. So while it's not a general, you have to do this for this because it can be specific to schools, those conversations happen all the time.
I also think in the actual Program of Studies document, there are some nice sequencing flow charts in terms of if you take this particular science course, this might be the next science course that you take, which sort of tracks you then through not only interest but grade level and freshman, sophomore, junior, senior-type scenario. So that's also a resource that's in the Program of Studies as well.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, well, thank you very much for that very in-depth presentation. Okay, we are still on Section Six. All right, six point zero-three, review award of contract for a request for proposal for solar panels, solar power purchase agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, for a number of years, at least as long as I've been a member of the team here with W J C C, talked about solar and the need to take advantage of potentially some cost savings by way of solar power, and also being more environmentally conscious and looking at sustainability. We went through an RFP process, and Marcellus is here to talk about the outcome of that and the recommendation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and school board members, and Dr. Kiefer. Tonight's agenda items support key priority organization and efficiency, and is being brought forward for your consideration, is the review of the Award of Contract for a Request for Proposal Number two zero two five zero nine two seven, which is a solar power purchase agreement for W J C C schools to Dominion Energy. The operation needs is work to determine the feasibility of using solar energy for W J C C schools and facilities. W J C C requested proposals from qualified firms, partnerships, corporations, associations, and professional organizations to provide a turnkey solar services through a power purchase agreement. An RFP was issued, a notice of the RFP was posted on the James City County Bozen Board, emailed to contractors, and placed on the James City County website. Seven vendors responded to that RFP. Of those, Dominion Energy was chosen by the selection committee as the respondent that met the needs of W J C C schools. The superintendent recommends the board review the project information and recommendation for the award of contract to Dominion Energy, and be prepared to vote at the meeting on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
All right, any questions? Mr. Hoseng?
I guess, piggybacking off what Mr. Riffle had asked you before, so it's incumbent on the school system to ensure that the roof, roofs where these solar panels are going to be installed, will be able to hold them, accommodate them.
Yes, during the due diligence phase from Dominion Energy is when they come through, they will talk to us, they will look at our roof ages, which we recently did a facility condition index on our roofs in two thousand twenty-two, so we know which ones are in fair, good, poor condition. They will also, Dominion Energy will also work with our, the manufacturer of those roofs, to ensure that they will not void any warranties. And so, based on their assessment during that phase, they will determine which roofs we will do first. And they do have a matrix. Anything that is less than seven years old for a, what they call a metal roof, is an ideal age. Anything less than five years for what they call a, it's really a rubber roof, if you ever looked at a satellite, you'll see white roof, flat, it's a rubber roof, it's called E P D M or T P O, that's less than five years. None of our roofs at the current time are, meet those ideal age standards, but they will review those facility condition index, talk to the manufacturers to make a determination on which roofs we do first or next. For example, we have Stonehouse coming up in the next year, that'll be an ideal time to put solar on that roof. We recently did Lafayette in two thousand nineteen, and Clara Bird Baker as well a couple of years ago. So it's time, we have, it's, they can be done at those at this time, it's just they're going to review them to make sure they're not voiding any warranties.
And currently, the, I guess, if I understand everything right, the installation, the materials, et cetera, et cetera, all that is being, for lack of a better term, given to Williamsburg, James City County, and the only thing that we will have to pay for is the actual energy that we use based on those solar panels.
And to say it better myself, you are absolutely correct. We'll only be paying for the energy used.
And if the cost of energy goes up, I'm assuming our cost will go up?
Yeah, the cost will go up, but we will have some savings because we won't be using the grid as we usually would have. We'd be using some solar, so.
Mr. Riffle?
I just wanted to ask how long the contract lasts? Like, I know we have schools that are being built right now or soon.
The original estimate is a twenty-five-year P P A to recoup back the savings that we were expecting. Some schools, it's low as seventy-nine thousand dollars over that twenty-five years, but then we have some that reach almost three-point-five million dollars for total savings over all of our schools, for about seventeen million over that twenty-five years. So, being able to not use that on energy, and Dr. Kiefer, and you guys may decide to use it elsewhere, but that would be, that would be ideal, to be able to use those savings.
I guess my question is, would we be able to use the same contract for any other buildings we build in our school system after this point, so we don't have to go back and do this process again?
Yes, I'll say, for example, our two new pre-K centers that are coming online, they would also review those to determine if we could use energy and solar panels on those as well.
Great, thank you.
Can you explain, I think this is part of it, there's some of, some of the energy generated from the solar panels, it might be more than we actually use, is that correct? And that it might be used elsewhere? Did I not understand that?
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand.
So, goes, does the, at times that we are not using the energy, does the energy go into the grid for other entities to be able to access solar-wise?
Yes.
And do we profit off of that?
We do. There's discounted energy.
You want to answer that, Mr. Riffle?
No, I just did, Mr. Snipes, this is not my job today.
No, no, no. So, we will only be paying for the energy that we use, we will not profit off of anyone else being able to use that solar.
Part of the scenario, though, I think, is when we lock in certain rates, and those rates, you might see a flatter rate versus a rate increase because of the sole use and the idea that the solar that's not being used can be pushed out to the grid elsewhere. That factors into some of the cost savings that we would see over time.
Okay, but it's not a one-for-one, oh, you didn't use this much, so you get this much credit? Not like that.
It's not a distributive energy source, so, but a battery, for example, would be the best place where we could say, like, say the solar panel charges the battery, the battery didn't just chink or says that battery to the grid, we can get paid for that, but we can't get paid for solar being produced. It's a state law, it's a big annoyance that they have over the monopoly of Virginia, so.
Thank you. All right, any other, Mr. Hoseng?
If, after two, three, five years, we determine that it's more cost-effective for us to get our power from our original source and not the solar, is there a way for the school system to get out of the contract?
Yes, there is a way for this, without warranty.
All right, and any other questions before we move on? All right, thank you, Mr. Snipes. So we are moving into our next information and discussion items. We do have a handful here, plus some policies, so my intent is to have a little break after item seven point zero-two, if that works for everybody, just so you know, okay? All right, we will start with seven point zero-one, Overview of School Year Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six Enrollment.
Anytime the enrollment drops to the tune of two hundred students, I think it's important for the board to have some sort of awareness about perhaps why that occurred. There are also fiscal implications that we want you to be aware of. When enrollment drops, our team has been looking at twenty-four over twenty-five to try to understand the influx of students and the withdrawal of students, and to put some designations in place in terms of where those students have gone. Renee is going to lead our presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. So as we begin, this chart shows the K-12 enrollment trend over the past ten years. As you can see in the chart, our enrollment remained relatively stable until two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, when we saw a notable dip due to the pandemic. This year, we've experienced a decrease of two hundred and thirty-three students compared to last year, and we'll explore the reasons behind this decline in the following slides. No-shows are students that attended W J C C last year, and we expected them to return during the current year, but they left the division. As of September thirtieth, five hundred eighty-one students who were enrolled last year did not return. Forty-eight percent were elementary students, with the largest declines in first and second grades. Fifty-two percent were secondary students, with a significant drop in middle school enrollment. Fifty-nine of these students were English language learners, thirteen exited due to international relocation. The majority transferred to other public schools, either within Virginia or out of state. After accounting for new kindergarteners and withdrawals, our current full-time K-12 enrollment stands at eleven thousand one hundred forty-six students as of September thirtieth.
I think it's also, as you keep going, if you ask us what our enrollment is tomorrow, we would give you a different number. So part of the reason, because it's going to be different, it's changed since September thirtieth, it may not be eleven one forty-six today. Part of our scenario is, we generally try to speak in generalities, and we use two markers, September thirtieth number, and then we use the March A D M number. There's one other caveat, which is a December number, that we utilize oftentimes for special education purposes. So as you start thinking about numbers of students in the division, you will probably hear us talking about eleven thousand one hundred and forty-six is our number, but no, that's not exactly the number. It's really close.
This chart compares no-show data from September two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five during the same timeframe, from the first day of school through the official September thirtieth count. Two thousand twenty-four data is in green compared to the blue bars representing two thousand twenty-five data. There were eighty-seven more no-shows in two thousand twenty-five than in two thousand twenty-four. The reasons for departure remain consistent, primarily transfers to other public schools. In addition to no-shows, we had thirty-eight students who started the school year with us and withdrew by September thirtieth. These are families who notified us of their intent to leave, often citing relocation within Virginia or other personal reasons, as shown in this pie chart. Year over year, September withdrawals remain nearly identical, thirty-nine in two thousand twenty-four and thirty-eight in the current year. This graph shows five years of data for homeschooled students. The percentages remained relatively stable for the past three years at five and a half percent. However, this year, we have seen an increase of almost one percent to six-point-four percent, representing seven hundred fifteen students. This is approximately two percent higher than the current state average of four-point-three And here you will see our enrollment breakdown by grade. Our largest cohort is ninth grade this year with one thousand fifty-six students, and our smallest is first grade with seven hundred forty-two students. Of our total enrollment, ten thousand fifty-five students or ninety-point-two percent reside in James City County, and one thousand ninety-one students or nine-point-eight percent reside in the city of Williamsburg. This slide shows our student population by ethnicity. The largest group is white students at five thousand seven hundred eighty-five, followed by black students at two thousand forty-eight, and then Hispanic students at one thousand eight ninety-seven. And here you will see the gender breakdown is fairly balanced, with five thousand seven hundred seventy-three male students and five thousand three hundred seventy-three female And finally, looking at the projected financial impact, based on state funding formulas, our enrollment decline is projected to reduce state revenue by approximately one-point-two million. However, we are projecting an increase of three hundred eleven thousand in other revenue. This is primarily related to an increase in interest income, which is based on prior year actuals and current revenue to date. This results in an overall projected decrease of nine hundred thousand, about point-five percent of our overall budget. Please keep in mind that final state revenue is based on our March A D M, so we will continue to monitor and provide updates throughout the year. We'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Uh, Mrs. Donner?
I'm just curious, dropout at the elementary levels, that's just someone that you don't know where the kid went, or?
Yes, that's, that is correct.
And there's probably, there's probably no way to know, really just looking at these different charts, but it's like, some of these, well, I guess we have it by grade somewhere. They could be same families, right?
Yes, that's correct as well.
With kids at different levels, if the family moves and they had four kids, then they all went.
Right, there are specific withdrawal codes that we utilize relative to the state, and those codes then are what we use to run back the reports and do queries and synergy in terms of where students have gone. And those codes then are what we use to run back the reports and do queries and synergy in terms of where students have gone.
How many of these eighteen ninety seven Hispanics are transient? Man, are they like citizens, are they like passing through or any idea?
I'm not certain we have that information.
Mr. Ruffle?
Does aging on a school have any factor of like high school, like dropout or or participation? I just wanna wanna think about that.
Did you say aging out of school?
Yeah, like if you turn eighteen, you don't have to go to school anymore technically in state law, right? There's a lot of difference for special education and things like that.
Why don't we have, Adam, you wanna talk a little bit about. Programming related to students that begin to age out?
Yeah, uh students turning eighteen, you're right, don't are not obligated through compulsory attendance, um historically as we. Students who are turning eighteen that perhaps are behind on credits or vindicated a desire to drop out, we often work with them through the G E D program. Um look through learning lab, academic recovery options, so we tried to mitigate. How many students actually just refuse to attend after the age of eighteen, and I would say it's pretty minimal. Those who just flat out say were, I'm not coming after turning eighteen, so we try to find other options for them.
We are particularly persistent because we wanna ensure that we get the division credit. For students graduating from high school, and we also believe that if a student graduates from high school, he or she is better prepared to be a member of our society. So there are two reasons that we really push pretty hard, and I think to Adam's point, when when a young person gets to eighteen. And they recognize that they're not um compulsorily bound to attend. We try to coax them, cajole them, do just about whatever we can to help them get over one of those hurdles.
Um does like G E D program play into the enrollments number, or I just wanted to understand that, just as I didn't talk about it in high school, but I thought about it during this presentation. Are they included in the current enrollment? Yes, they are, they're they're still active students to the G E D program. Thank you.
Anything else from board members?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Huen. Take our break, item seven point zero two, Virginia Leads Innovation Network High School redesign.
Madam Chair, uh Dr. Worley and Dr. Brown are helping us champion work as a school division. To look at the high school experience and wonder what that experience could look like if it were redesigned. And take into consideration uh more fully the needs of students and what students are interested in studying. And how do we set up systems of support for that? So uh Adam and Kathy are gonna talk to us about our participation with the Valen cohort.
Thank you, Dr. Kever. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Kever. Dr. Brown and I will be sharing an overview of the work with the Virginia Leads Innovation Network. Which we will refer to as Valen throughout the presentation. And how this initiative will help us implement innovative opportunities to enhance high school learning in our division. Valen is a statewide network where leaders and practitioners work side by side to reimagine high school. We are the sixth cohort of educators to collaborate with other high school teams across the state on high school innovation. The work focuses on creating flexible learning roadmaps that prepare students for career pathways and training. Military enlistment in college. It also emphasizes a deeper integration of career and technical education and competency-based learning where students demonstrate mastery of skills. Valen focuses on practical, scalable innovations that increase student engagement, strengthen durable life skills. And expand post-secondary readiness. This work is supported by a new partnership with Getting Smart. Getting Smart is dedicated to designing, accelerating and amplifying equitable innovations and learning. Aiming to empower all individuals to thrive and lead in a complex world. The content and efforts span a wide range of forward-thinking themes in K twelve education. Over the next two years, coaches from the Valen Steering Committee and Getting Smart will provide guidance and support as we put ideas into practice. As we talk about reimagining high school, it's important to connect with features and examples of innovation connected with high school redesign. Some design themes include personalized learning pathways which are tailored to student interests. Real-world connections that link the classroom learning to authentic experiences. Exhibitions of learning where students showcase mastery, integrated technology to enhance access and opportunity. Collaborative networks of students and educators, authentic assessments that measure what truly matters. These ideas often transition into bigger concepts such as high school academies focused on a career cluster or pathway. Above all, this redesign keeps student engagement at the heart of every part of the work.
The next two slides show examples of work from previous Valen cohorts. As you can see here, King and Queen, King William and Matthews recently created a division portrait of a graduate. Stafford County operationalized the state's five Cs. Richmond City developed an innovation framework, Amherst County expanded project-based learning. And New Kent County launched the summer of more meaningful real-world engagement for students. Other divisions have reimagined practices such as, including Amherst, Chesapeake and Nelson County. Highlighting teacher and student voice through a Valen podcast. Hanover County piloting new electives for career exploration, Radford City transforming and reimagining school scheduling. Fairfax County shifting to student-led assessments, and finally Code R V A, a regional high school that is widely recognized for promoting student agency. And performance tasks. As we step into this work, some of our priorities include expanding our depth of work, supporting the three Es of employment, enlistment and enrollment. With the identification of a clear path to post-secondary success for every student. This aligns with new expectations set forth from the Virginia Department of Education's school performance and s- and support framework. This means facilitating experiences that develop critical thinking with our students, enhance a growth mindset, teach collaboration off multiple pathways of choice. Our commitment is that all students graduate career in college ready with a solid action plan from our high schools.
So what does it this look like for us? Our team representing W J C C and our three high schools is collaborating with over twenty other high schools across Virginia. We have twenty two stakeholders representing Jamestown, Lafayette and Warhol High Schools and central office staff in our cohort. Stakeholders include teachers, school counselors, principals, a graduation coach, an assistant principal. A school improvement specialist and several leaders and support team members from central office. This is the beginning of a two-year journey. Our team will work with our assigned coach, who will serve as both a resource and thought partner as we design our next steps.
We launched our work on September twenty fifth, beginning with a design thinking workshop workshop facilitated in partnership with William and Mary. In an afternoon of collaboration and planning with our home team. Since then, we have collaborated with W J within W J C C and at our in-person meeting with the Valen six point O cohort. In Enrico on October fourteenth, pictured on this slide. Our design question driving our work over the next few years. How might we create flexible learning opportunities that align with the needs of our students based on their own identified goals and necessary skills to meet success? Moving forward, we'll continue opportunities to collaborate with each other and with high schools' teams across the state. An important component of our next steps will be the exploration and visiting sites already engaged in this work. Our team has identified sites to visit and initiatives to explore and are currently finalizing several visits throughout the fall and winter. Throughout this year and next, we will study what is needed in our community and develop ideas and plans for high school redesign, including options to pilot initiatives. Pilots allow us the opportunity to learn, collect data and make informed decisions and recommendations at the end of our two years. Our team will continue to explore opportunities informed by student voice, stakeholder feedback, and most importantly, the needs of our student learners. In closing, Valen six point O represents a chance to rethink high schools and ways that truly prepare students for life beyond graduation. This concludes our introduction to this work, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Brown and Dr. Worley. Uh Mrs. Henley?
For the um wor- design thinking workshop. Were at least all three principals or assistant principals from each of the high schools at that? Or was there only like one representative for?
For those days, all twenty two of our stakeholders on our team were um present.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Is so this was this is a a network that already existed and we we just decided to to join, is this is that what happened?
Yes, there was a an open call for school divisions or schools to participate in the sixth iteration of the cohort. And we felt like the time was right for us as a school division to really reconsider the high school experience. Um it was, I think, last spring when the first call came out. And internally, we talked about it being the right time to do this.
Great, thank you for that update. And that was seven point zero two, right? Alright, we're gonna call a five-minute break.
Thank you. Thank you.
And move on to item seven point zero three, Elevate Twenty Eight Annual Stakeholder Survey.
Madam Chair, in the fall of twenty twenty four, we administered a survey to get some baseline data related to key performance indicators within the strategic plan. We presented that information, I believe, to the board in a December School Board meeting. We have reissued that survey this fall and want to present to you some year-over-year data looking at similar questions and Carl Wall is going to take us through that presentation. Carl?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board members and Dr. Kiefer. Tonight, as Dr. Kiefer had outlined, I will provide a summary of the data collected from this year's Elevate Twenty Eight Stakeholder Survey. As a reminder, there are five priorities in our strategic plan. Our key priority of academic achievement, college and career readiness, and educational equity is supported by four other priorities that enable us to keep our central focus on learning. The annual Elevate Twenty Eight Survey measures stakeholder perspectives and perceptions, excuse me, on two supporting priorities, safety and security, and human capital and positive culture. As we move through the slides, you will see the priority icon that best connects to the data being presented. In October and November, we conducted a survey of WJCC school staff, parents or guardians, and students in grades four through twelve. This is the second year of this annual survey, as was previously mentioned, so we are now able to compare the data from one year to another. This year, we saw a small increase in staff participation, but a decline in both family and student participation. In all, five thousand eight hundred sixty-four stakeholders responded to the survey. This presentation will look at both their collective and diverse perspectives in the, in our division's progress towards our key performance indicators. Each slide will indicate the statement that was posed to the stakeholder groups. In some cases, the question was identical for all three groups. However, in other cases like this, the statement was tailored to the specific audience. So here, for example, staff members were asked to respond to, "Students at my school feel like they belong." Families were presented with, "Students at my child's school feel like they belong." And for students, simply, "I feel like I belong." On the charts, you will see four blocks from left to right. Green on the far left represents strongly agree. Next, blue is agree. Then yellow is disagree. And finally, on the far right is red or strongly disagree. Data from last year is displayed in the chart on the left and data from this year is on the right. Strongly agree and agree are added together to represent the overall level of agreement with the statement. So in this case, in twenty twenty-five, ninety-seven percent of staff agree or strongly agree that students at their school feel like they belong. This is an increase in two points from last year's survey. Looking, oops, excuse me, looking down at the chart on the right, again, that's the twenty twenty-five data, ninety-two percent of families agree that students at their child's school feel like they belong and ninety-one percent of students feel like they belong. As described on the last slide, looking from top to bottom, you will see results from staff, then families, then students, and again, from left to right, strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree. Here, participants were asked to respond to the statement, "Adults at my school or at my child's school respect students." While staff perceptions of agreement remain the same this year as compared to last, as noted by the black circle with ninety-six percent labeled, we saw a one-point decline in family perceptions, that's noted by the orange circle with ninety-two percent, and a two-point increase in student perceptions, as noted by the green circle with the eighty-three percent label. You will continue to see this color coding system throughout the presentation to indicate a change in perceptions from twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Next, responding to students at my school or at my child's school, respect other students. Here, we saw an increase in both family and student perceptions. Next, students were asked to respond to the statement, "There is a teacher, counselor, or staff member to whom I can go to for help." And you can see the variations of the statement for staff and families on the slide. Again, we saw an increase in staff and student perceptions. The statement presented to staff in this question was, "The staff in this school care about student well-being." Again, here, we saw a three-point increase in student perception. This statement was only presented to staff, "The administrators in this school care about staff well-being." Staff and students were asked to respond to, "I feel supported by teachers and staff in this school." Again, here, we see an increase in three points in student perception. Each stakeholder group responded to this same statement, "School staff members are aware of safety and security procedures." Here, we saw a slight increase in family and student perceptions. And again, an identical statement presented to all three groups, "Students are aware of safety and security procedures." On this question or on this statement, we saw a one-point decrease in staff perceptions, but a two-point and four-point increase in family and student perceptions respectively. Staff and students responded to the statement, "I feel safe at school." The statement presented to families was, "My child feels safe at school." Here, we saw a four-point increase in family perceptions and a seven-point increase in student perception, which is bo- both a reassuring to see. Stakeholders expressed their level of agreement if their school is well-maintained. Here, we saw a five-point decrease in staff perception, but a three-point increase in student perception. Participants here responded to, "Teachers and staff set high expectations for every student." We see a two-point decline in staff perception, but a one-point increase in both family and student perception. And finally, stakeholders were asked to respond to an overall statement, "My school is a good place to work and a good place for learning," that was for staff. And for families and students, "My child's school or my school is a good place for learning." Here, we saw a four-point increase in student perceptions, while staff and family perceptions remain the same year-over-year. We added two questions to this year's survey as a means of measuring perception changes since we conducted the Superintendent's Transition Survey in the spring. This question, "How well-informed are you about WJCC's strategic plan Elevate Twenty Eight?" seeks to measure the shared understanding of our division's continuous improvement plan. Here, you can see we have made substantial gains in that endeavor with staff indicating a twenty-three-point increase in being at least somewhat informed and families indicating a twelve-point increase in their understanding around the strategic plan. We will continue to be strategic as we communicate and directly align our work with the priorities in Elevate Twenty Eight, so stakeholders can make intentional connections to the plan. And finally, this question, "How confident are you that WJCC is headed in the right direction?" Again, we saw an increase here, ten points in staff feeling either very confident or somewhat confident, confident, and a fourteen-point increase in families feeling the same. We take this as a sign of affirmation that our community is feeling optimistic about the future of our school division. We also asked one open-ended question, "From your perspective, what must WJCC focus on to become the premier school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia?" The responses to this question were compared to previous data collected from the Superintendent's Transition Survey and were consistent with the themes that have been identified and will be presented in Dr. Kiefer's transition plan later this evening. But at this time, we're happy to answer any questions related to the Elevate Twenty Eight Survey.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Donner?
I'm curious, uh, so slide six, which says, "Students at my, at my or my child's school respect each other, respect other students," that is a fifty-seven. Um, but then comparing to, that they kind of feel safe and I think it's an okay place to be. I'm just curious, and maybe if you all have peeled back and see of that fifty-seven percent, is that concentrated in certain grade levels, certain schools? What's the next layer behind that?
I think the next layer behind that is to explore what those layers are. We just closed the survey on Sunday and wanted to get the data in front of the board this evening. Uh, our next steps would include disaggregating that by school, disaggregating that by grade level. Have not done that level of, of depth in terms of the analysis yet.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just noticed that that particular question got some of the lowest positive feedback.
Not to discount, everything else looks great.
We get ninety percent agreement on things. I th- think that that is a, a good marker. It would be great to have a hundred percent agreement on something. I'm not sure we will ever quite reach that, but at the same time, we were encouraged by some of the upward trends. Our goal in doing this survey every fall is to continue to look at what are the specific stories that we can glean from it. And I think to Ms. Donner's earlier point, looking at it from the perspective of grade levels and students is important. We've done, I think, a lot of surveying of our students, of our families, of our staff. The results of those surveys need to be utilized in action steps that we take. And so, so part of what we want to continue to do is to build out what are the next steps as we gather this information and gather this data. Uh, there will be an, there will be an additional survey that our students have an option or opportunity for related to the Crime and Violence Report from the state. I believe that's a high school survey this year. It's going to happen in January and February. It is a lengthy survey, somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and forty questions. So there, on a recurring basis, we're asking similar items, but this is our data for our survey, so we will go back in and look specifically at what we need to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm encouraged by the the last slide, the, the, you know, headed in the right direction. I don't, that might mean different things to different people, but that's a significant jump from just a couple of months. So I think that's, um, positive.
I was also super pleased about the Elevate to Twenty Eight Understanding and Awareness. Well, it's my personal mission on behalf of the school division, right? Never let it be said that you don't know that we have a strategic plan and there are five priorities.
Um, also quickly say, yes, I was very encouraged when I had reviewed this earlier and also in, in looking at it again together, um, that there's noticeable increases in comparison to when we did this last year, when you did this last year. Um, and also even within the increases, there are more respondents who said strongly agree overall, like overwhelmingly in each of them. Um, you know, there are a few exceptions here and there, but, um, I feel like that's also moving in a very positive direction, even if it stayed the same. Within those bands, you can see that there are more people percentage-wise. Um, but speaking of percentage-wise, it's, I guess, it can be a little misleading, right? Because you have a significantly less number or whole that you're looking at. Um, so I'm wondering what the strategies are to try to increase that family and student engagement so that we can have more of a sort of fair comparison year after year.
I, I think honestly, from the administrative perspective of the division, it's continuing to be very strategic about the surveys that we release. And we, over the course of the last six months, have asked a lot of questions and asked for a lot of feedback. So we, we will continue to refine that process internally so as not to, um, so as not to over, overwhelm folks with participation opportunities. We definitely want the feedback, so we need to figure out the best way to ask for that in a, in a way that generates specific data.
Yeah, and, and I would just share one tidbit, um, from a recent CAC meeting that a new member shared is that she was overwhelmingly positive, um, about her experience as a new family coming into her division. And, um, I think we were just talking about like, oh, low participation, you know, joking around about how maybe only a few people showed up when we had all these opportunities for community feedback. Um, and she tried to encourage us on leadership by telling us that, um, in her perspective, she thinks that's because things are going well and so therefore, not that families don't want to engage in these surveys, of course, they, they do, but also they feel like maybe things are going well and so.
Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Alright, and we will roll from that into item seven point zero four, Superintendent Transition Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am particularly nervous this evening. And I'm particularly nervous because as we've talked some, there are eleven thousand one hundred and forty-six students that I'm responsible for, that we are responsible for on a daily basis. And that creates, from my perspective, a fairly significant level of pressure. And I endorse that pressure. Pressure is a privilege and it is a privilege to serve this division, but I am nervous. Recently, I was gifted a book by a member of this board and it was entitled Moral Ambition. And there's a quote in that book, as the book starts off, that says, "I cannot believe that the real purpose, purpose of life is to be happy." "I think the purpose of life is to be useful, to be responsible, to be honorable, to be compassionate. It is above all to matter, to count, to stand for something and to have it make some difference that you have lived at all." And the, the purpose of this transition summary report is to give you, the board, the community, the learnings that I've done over the course of the last four and a half or five months. I've witnessed firsthand the extraordinary dedication of our teachers and staff, the energy and promise of our students, and the strength of support from families and community partners. I've also been affirmed that strong schools are built on more than curriculum and test scores. They thrive when relationships are nurtured, when trust is earned, and everyone shares a common vision. At the center of the work that we've done over the last four months is, what will it take for WJCC to become the premier school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia? I believe that answer is firmly rooted in being student-centered, being collaborative, and being strategic. Those three words, I believe, shape our way forward. They are the three key words that I have shared with staff since being appointed to be superintendent. And oftentimes, if you were with me, I will ask, what are the three key words? Because it is important for me that they begin to resonate with our staff members. Being student-centered means keeping students at the heart of every action we take, whether it's designing lessons or allocating resources or making policy decisions. We ask ourselves, how will this impact our learners? From pre-K to graduation, every student deserves access to high-quality instruction, personalized support, and opportunities to show their gains. Being collaborative to me means embracing the power of partnership. Our schools are strongest when we work as one community, teacher, staff, students, families, and civic leaders, all rowing in the same direction. I feel like we are beginning to build that level of trust and I will continue to listen deeply and engage openly with those we serve, even in cases where we don't always agree. And being strategic to me means leading with vision and discipline. I believe our strategic plan lays that out and provides a roadmap towards excellence. Our priorities are focused on academic achievement, safe and supportive schools, employee growth, community engagement, and operational effectiveness. With our collective energy, we are going to turn our strategies into sustained success. Utilizing the key priority and the supporting priorities, there are a number of things occurred over the course of the last year. We have, in my opinion, undertaken a year of feedback. From the employee input process last fall to the Elevate Twenty Eight Stakeholder Survey from last fall and this evening that we previewed, we conducted employee focus groups. You asked for information as you were going through the search process. I visited with students in a Student Voices tour in the spring at every one of our secondary schools and there was a survey that I released for the Superintendent's Transition Plan that has given us a considerable amount of data. In addition to the survey, and I did want you to be aware of the participants and participant numbers with the survey, four hundred and sixty-five staff, nearly fifteen hundred students, and almost seven hundred families participated. But in addition to the survey data, I've spent an hour or two with the Summer Leadership Institute Group looking at results from the survey. I conducted seventeen community, school-based listening sessions. Every school staff I met with, pre-K through twelve during the month of August. There were seventy-seven, seventy, felt like seventy, there were seven community connection events. To Ms. Chin's point, some of those evenings were, uh, the staff that was attending with me outnumbered the participants. However, we gathered valuable feedback from everyone that participated. I can have conducted community meetings with a wide range of perspectives relative to public education. Uh, nine in total over the summer and fall and another four or five scheduled into the month of January. I gathered your feedback relative to Elevate to Twenty Eight from the retreat. I worked with the Student Leadership Group during the academy to look at themes and trends, most recently last week in the principal's meeting. Uh, I also gave an opportunity for every one of the members of the School Board Central Office Team to meet with me individually. I think there were twenty-two or twenty-three of those conversations. In general, I have done my earnest best to listen to this community and this staff around what's going on in our schools and how to make it even stronger. There were some key themes that emerged. Real-world, student-centered learning, some of which you've heard about this evening in terms of the things that we're looking at with the program of studies or with some of the work around VALEN. But that real-world, student-centered learning also is necessitated at the elementary level. We've heard a lot about teachers, staff, support, and retention, so there's a compensation piece that came out loud and clear. Continued conversations around student behavior, discipline, and school climate. Recurring theme related to mental health and well-being, not simply for students, but for staff and families as well. Communication transparency and voice recurring. Stronger communication, timely communication, transparency with respect to decision-making, transparency with respect to rationale for decision-making, and then a voice at the table in terms of providing input or feedback as necessitated. Access to programming, access to activities, and the diversity of thought within our community. That we don't all have the same vision of public education, but do we have the ability to work with one another to activate a, a, a central focus on how we get better? There were emerging themes around how we can continue to improve our operations, logistics, and facilities. And frankly, one of the saddest pieces of this was the, the relative lack of connection to Elevate to Twenty Eight uh, that came out in late May. I'm so thrilled to see that we have a stronger connection with the most recent survey that we've done. We asked for specific advice for the incoming superintendent. It was suggested that I be present, visible, and listen authentically, that I- It was suggested that I be present, visible, and listen authentically, that I work on, that we work on expanding student opportunities. That we focus on instructional quality and learning rigor, that we continue to prioritize staff support, compensation, and retention. Work on addressing student behavior challenges, discipline in school climate, again, strengthen communication transparency, and then investing in student well-being and mental health. There've been things that I've wondered about along the way as well. I, when I joined the team here in Williamsburg James City County, I've been in public education for twenty-six years. I'm now entering year thirty-one. So there are things on my mind when it comes to how we can continue to work as an organization. First and foremost, student achievement. And that has been an area that I have been interested in and thinking about uh, since the moment I first applied for the job. There is a definite need in our school division to continue focus on literacy and literacy work pre-K twelve to not only include what happens day in and day out in our schools, but also what happens in, in our homes and with our families. A need for stronger community connectivity and support for schools. What does that look like and what does it mean is to be determined, but there is a need for us to continue to work to, to broaden our message around community participation. Administratively, our leaders need additional guidance and support when it comes to providing instructional leadership and feedback and growth for our teachers. I believe firmly that we need to establish a profile of a W J C C learner which would outline five or six key attributes that we want every single student to be able to demonstrate during their time with us. And that also goes along with an instructional framework that guides our instructional work day in and day out relative to teaching and learning. I believe firmly that each student needs a postgraduate action plan. We have the academic and career planning process. We will look to expand that as I talk a little bit more about some of the next action steps. I've also been wondering about this idea of we being greater than us versus them. As I've listened across school staffs, central office and support staffs in the community, there often is a perception of us versus them, or they, or what they get is different than what we get. I have been encouraging the idea of we is greater than us versus them. And when we get involved in situations and someone says they, I very politely smile and say, who is the they? Because we need to start to put names with the they so that we can work together. Student Exhibitions of Learning, you heard a little bit about, which I'll expand on. I believe that needs to occur at every level and that we will work collaboratively to develop additional student leadership opportunities and also provide pathways for students to mentor other students. So what are the action steps? How do we get there? Over the course of the next several slides, I'm going to outline those action steps. These will not all be done tomorrow. These will not all be done next year. I am laying out a set of action steps for us to guide our work over the course of the next sixteen, eighteen months, perhaps even two years. And it might be during this process that we need to alter those action steps and be willing to be flexible as we work forward. The action steps are also divided up by our current strategic plan priorities. So for instance, as we look at our key priority of academic achievement and college and career readiness, we must continue and ultimately accelerate our, accelerate our work related to literacy and numeracy. We believe, or I believe, that we should initiate work to formally establish a profile of a learner. That's a community conversation where we would gather community perspective around what are those key attributes for each one of our students. And also, almost simultaneously, develop a teaching and learning framework to guide our instructional program. We need to review screen time use for students, K twelve, and better understand the purposeful integration that's occurring with our computers so that it's not simply packets online. We need to establish an expectation for student exhibitions of learning whereby students can talk about what they've learned, why it's important, and why it's meaningful. We need to look at enhancing and expanding real-world and authentic learning experiences and ensure that those are also assessment opportunities for our students. Creating a grad- graduate action plan process for every student will take time. But I believe that at some juncture, that graduate action plan needs to become a graduation requirement for the school division. That every single one of our students, when they walk across the stage, will have a firm idea of what they're doing next. And it's not by happenstance. We want to expand options for career and technical education and workforce readiness for students in our community and then also establish a G R O T C program option for the high school students in Williamsburg James City County. Those are action steps for our key priority. Let me go on. Under the supporting priority of safety and security, I believe we need to establish a K P I related to the number and percentage of students participating in school-sponsored activities and programs. I believe to my core that if students are engaged in their school beyond the academic day, they are more likely to experience higher levels of success and a desire to be in school on a daily basis. We need to reach those students that aren't participating and find the right pathway for them. We need to expand efforts to develop student leadership capacity through specific programming. Explore and develop formal mentoring relationships for students with both community members and with other students, whether that be horizontally or vertically. Continue to focus on providing behavior support pathways and interventions for our students across all grade levels. And then I believe we need to convene a stakeholder group to better understand and make recommendations for students and staff mental health supports. Looking at human capital and positive culture, we must maintain a focus on implementing the compensation study recommendations in our next two fiscal year cycles. It would be great if we could do it all in fiscal twenty-seven. More realistically, we need to look at it across two fiscal years. We also need to review and enhance stipend program to better support staff who have made the commitment to go above and beyond and support our students. We need to establish a wellness focus group for staff. Because part of our healthcare scenario needs to be grounded in the idea of creating wellness opportunities for the people on our team. There needs to be a professional learning focus group for staff, as we've heard on a recurring basis that the desire to have more input and ownership in professional learning opportunities. We need to continue to refine and expand our staffing, recruitment, and marketing as we want to become the employer of choice in the Commonwealth of Virginia. On a recurring basis, I've heard about planning time at the elementary school level. We will be developing a planning time study group for elementary schools that helps make recommendations on different pathways for us to better make use of elementary school time and put teachers in a position to feel like that planning time is protected and valuable. We'll work to establish stronger School Board Central Office staff visibility and relationships in schools. And finally, formalize an employee recom- recognition program to celebrate the staff that are on our team. Moving into communications and engagement. It is my intent to establish a number of advisory councils. That number may look daunting, and frankly, it is. But as I've listened and considered our work as a school division, it is imperative for me to engage all of those various groups in the direction of our school division, gain their support, listen to their wisdom, and help activate them in terms of broadening our message. So we'll establish a family advisory council. We'll establish a community advisory council and reestablish a business advisory council. We currently utilize teacher forum and the support employee forum that will continue. But I will also look to broaden our instructional team advisory council with new members, a support team advisory council. And we'll also utilize the student advisory council that actually starts working together this week. I will work with school leadership and schools to establish three specific advisory groups in each of the buildings. A school planning council to be formally established in each school that will help work with the administrative team, the leadership team in each building around their school improvement process. That would be made up of, of family members or students, so that there can be some connection between the work in terms of school improvement and the work of what our families know are going on in each of our buildings. A principal advisory council, which would allow staff members to have a pathway to address concerns and issues at the building level with building administrators. And then finally, we'll work with each school to establish a student advisory council in each building. Expanding the work related to volunteer opportunities in our schools through face programming, build stronger school division partnership networks, and exploring the use of students to support W J C C storytelling opportunities, be it on social media or other avenues that we can help get the word out about the things that are occurring. When it comes to organizational efficiency and effectiveness, we need to do a better job with our data dashboard. And we need to refine and enhance that with a forward-facing reporting mechanism related to our K P I's. There needs to be an additional review of our current organizational structure for some potential realignment to more effectively serve the school division. Uh, we need to conduct a review of child nutrition services programming for refinements and enhancements and also reestablish a gold standard facility cleanliness expectation. I'm going to be asking each School Board Central Office and or department to work on internal process review work to ensure that our systems are talking to each other and that we are not working in silos, but that we are working collaboratively. And then finally, I'm going to recommend that we rethink and rework our strategic plan with a renewed focus on stakeholder participation in ownership. That is a long list of items to come out of an action plan. I don't make all of those recommendations and statements casually. I take them incredibly seriously. And we went through a number of them today in our senior leadership uh, meeting. And I think some people walked away from that going, we're going to do all of this? It is a process and it is a journey. Those items that I've just outlined for you, I believe, put us in a position to be the premier school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia and look forward to engaging with you, with our stakeholders in that work. I'll answer some questions and then talk about some next steps.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. It was very, you've been busy. Uh, any questions or comments related to that? Mr. Riffle?
Dr. Kiefer, I want to say, uh, on behalf of parents and people I've interacted with in the division, that people have been very excited to see you and, and the people of our central office more recently than most. Um, this is, this is a long list, but there's things for everyone to be excited about, which is important. And I appreciate the work you've put into this presentation. I am excited to hear about the next steps. I know Ms. Chin and I get to kind of be a part of it a little quicker than most board members do with Thursdays, student advisory council and things like that, but this is a, they make a tremendous impact to our students and to our families and the way people interact and view our school system, so I appreciate the work so far.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Any other questions or comments? We can roll into next steps and maybe we'll circle back if there are questions after that.
I'm gonna let this sit with you for a little bit. Cause I know that I've dropped a lot on you this evening. Dropped a lot on staff as well. We're going to continue to talk about this and we'll give you an opportunity in some two-by-one meetings with me to give me additional perspective as we continue to refine some of these key steps. I'd also like to present this information during the joint meeting in December to the Board of Supervisors and City Council. Perhaps not the whole presentation, but parts of it, so that there can be a broader understanding and awareness of the work that we're doing as a school division. We'll also conduct some employee webinars so that we can ensure the messaging is broad and the messaging is understood. So those are the initial next steps.
Any questions or comments, Mrs. Donner?
I just appreciate, sir, as Mr. Riffle said, that there's something in here for everyone and it's looking from academic achievement down to the facilities in which our students are, across to the wide, the wide community. So not just parents and staff, but our parents and students, but also looking at our community partners and so it just feels very robust. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's important for me to mention that there are other things that we're doing as a school division that aren't in this. So for instance, today in our senior leadership team meeting, Mr. Snipes mentioned, well, should you put redistricting in? And there was some, I, I thought about it, we're going to redistrict, that is organizationally efficient, operationally efficient. It's something that's already in process, so I didn't include it. I didn't include the idea of going through the budgeting process. So there are a number of things happening that will continue to happen, but these are specific items that I felt like during the transition period that I've heard on a recurring basis that we need to address.
Also, um, I appreciate the fact that everything I was looking for in a superintendent made it on your long list. And as you remember, when we met, and I, you asked what could you do? I said, walk on water. I would hold your feet to the fire, so that's how. Handled each other out, but I, but what I appreciate the most is that you are willing to try.
Thank you. I need a life jacket.
Yeah, this is, this is extremely ambitious, um, but that's, that's what we want to strive for, right? We want to set high expectations, high standards, and that does start at the top. And so, um, I think this is, is an excellent transition plan. You know, from over the course of the four years I've been on the board and just things that I've heard over time. Um, this answers a lot of, a lot of the concerns and complaints that I've, I've heard. Um, and we have, of course, we have to do it. We have to do it successfully. Um, but I do know, I can, I can say with certainty that you have, you have listened and you have internalized what, um, various stakeholders have been saying for a long time and are, and are certainly saying now. And I hope that the, um, various stakeholders in the community will continue to take advantage of, um, of a superintendent and a board who actively seek input. I know, um, as a governance team, we truly want to hear how people are doing, what their concerns are, what could be improved, if you have ideas for improvement. I know that that's true for the board and that's true for you. And so, um, you know, if, if the, the community connections events weren't well-attended or, or it, as well-attended as we might have imagined, there's still email, there's still other ways to connect, and I know that, that you're open to that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for this. Um, it will be an ongoing process and, um, but I have confidence that you and your staff are going to get it done.
Thank you.
Alright. Item seven point zero five is just a brief discussion of the School Board Evaluation Tool discussion. Um, this is something that we've done typically every year. It just, just relates to the school board. We sort of evaluate ourselves. Um, it, I think it fell off of our plates last fall because we had a few other things we were engaged in this time last year. One of which being entering into a superintendent search, which produced the superintendent and the briefing that we just had. So I think that that was a valuable use of our time last fall. Um, but Mrs. Donner, will, do you want to speak to this or do you want to say anything?
I mean, other than I will, this is a tool that we'll send to the board. The board will fill it out and then when we typically do a retreat, uh, with V S B A in the February timeframe, uh, we will use that as an opportunity to reflect on our, um, how we rate ourselves as a board and where we have, we're doing well and where we have opportunities.
Thank you. That is brief and we will move on to policies.
Yes, ma'am. Favorite time of the evening. Uh, we have several policies that we would like to preview for the board. I'm thinking, there we go. Excellent. First one, Agenda Item Eight Point Zero One, uh, Review Revisions to Policy G A A Staff Time Schedules. We have the need, I think, to, um, have a, a little bit more nimble system when it comes to staff time schedules. And what you see before you is a revision to policy that allows for some specific changes to time schedules to be handled via regulation. The policy itself, the first, um, lines six through nineteen are the overarching pieces of the staff time schedule. And the language that you see that is stricken between lines twenty-one and ninety-seven are picked up in the draft regulation under staff time schedules. Uh, we think that this is the, the most effective way to go. Uh, there is specific information that we have added in related to holiday pay and hazard pay as a scenario that we've heard as we've asked staff to help us be ready to reopen schools after a snow event, uh, or needing to work in obscure hours when the, the school division may not be open.
Alright, any questions from board members on this?
Policy G B L, which is Eight Point Zero Two, is really, and, and so the other piece that Policy G B L, which is eight point zero two, we're really, and so the other piece that we're somewhat proud of is that we're getting into this five-review cycle, five-year review cycle, which is a state code requirement you may be aware of. We worked really hard over the course of about eighteen months to get caught up on all of our backlog policies. And now we're going to cycle back through in a five-year review piece. So this one is not quite in that five-year review, but it was last revised in 2021. The formatting was updated for consistency with other policies. And we added some specific language on lines ten through thirteen relative to when employment verification of a former employee is requested.
I'm assuming you all will speak up or make a gesture if you have a question. I'm not seeing that. So we will move on to eight point zero three.
G B L A Unauthorized Release of Confidential Information. Minimal changes here. We added the cross-reference to Policy G A, which was Employee Conduct, which was recently added to our policy book. Another scrivener's change in terms of capitalizations. Nothing substantive.
All right. Item eight point zero four, G B O.
G B O, which is the Virginia Retirement System. We updated the language on lines six through seven to align more closely with the V S B A model policy that is code-driven, related to the Virginia Retirement System and who must be automatically enrolled.
All right. It's pretty straightforward. Item eight point zero five, I G D J.
Yes, ma'am. Interscholastic Athletics. There is not a corresponding V S B A model policy. There was some repetitive language on lines fourteen and fifteen. We say pretty clearly on line fourteen that interscholastic sports will not be a part of the elementary program. Though I will say parenthetically, during the back-to-school kickoff event when we had a student panel, there was at least one elementary school student who felt like we should have interscholastic elementary school athletics. So if we're truly listening, just saying, but right now in policy, we're not allowed to do that. And we won't be doing that at the elementary level right now, probably until we conquer some of our transportation concerns. The other piece that I wanted to mention is that we have a process in place whereby we bring on a sport and/or athletic competition that had not formally been involved in a regulation. The other rationale for this policy revision is to codify by way of I G D J R, the Interscholastic Athletics Regulation, which outlines the process to becoming a V H S L sport in the school division. We talked about this during our retreat in terms of where we were in the different phases relative to the sport of lacrosse as an example.
I think we do have interscholastic athletics in elementary schools called W I S C, the ship programs where they play different schools.
It is not our purview, Ms. Huntley.
All right. Any questions on this one? All right.
Policy J L, Student Fundraising Activities. No specific content changes here. This is a five-year review. There are a couple of cross-references that are to be updated.
I just have one question on this. The first paragraph, second sentence, it talks about that being, must be provide an educational benefit. Is that defined anyplace? Does that include like drama clubs, sporting events, or like athletic teams, et cetera?
I don't believe we have a specific definition listed of educational benefit, but those items that you just mentioned would fall into the realm of educational benefit.
I mean, I just want to make sure.
That we're not limiting ourselves?
Correct.
Okay. I don't believe that we are limiting ourselves by use of that language. Our principals, when reviewing fundraising requests, are encouraged to understand what the educational benefits are.
All right. And last but not least?
School visitors. Again, this is a five-year review. No content changes recommended. Legal and cross-references updated per V S B A model. You'll note that at the bottom in green. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will take care of our one and only action item for the evening. Item nine point zero one, Approval of Personnel Actions. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Ms. Huntley?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Ms. Huntley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Kavasov?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
And we will go to board member comments. Ms. Huntley, can I start with you?
Sure. So thoroughly enjoyed the Veterans Day programs this morning. I went to D J Montague and Laurel Lane. And when we talk about children having real-world experiences, to have them come up and read and articulate that they know what a veteran is, and they were so proud to sing for the people in the audience. And nobody can stand like a Marine, though. And then they do this call, "Ooh, yeah," or something. But the kids, that's probably their highlight because they're trying to sing, but they're also looking at all the people that are standing because they're so impressed. Also, another thing we talked about, real world, we saw at J H S, Mr. Riffle and I went to see service projects. We saw an art project where children in Honduras sent pictures to our art students. They scanned them and then they somehow transferred it to a color by number or paint by number. And they had painted some beautiful pictures of those children. And then they're going to send them back to Honduras and they're going to get a video of them opening their own portrait. And then we also saw where children in history class were working on a year-long project for food insecurities, just studying all about food insecurities. What does it mean? And then they are going to have twenty hours that they're going to have to give back to the community. And they will have service projects dealing with our food insecurities. So, you know, this is what we were talking about when we were overwhelmed with all that. I can make that connection there. Also, the William and Mary Law Day that Chair and I went to, the students got to go to William and Mary Law School. And there was a mock trial. And it was just great. And watching them, I know Ms. Donner and I went when the high schools do a competition. Well, it's not a competition, but they have the defendants and the prosecutors. They're our children. I actually thought were lawyers. That's how good they were. So again, when I see that come up in our program of studies, and I know that we've got kids that are just going to eat that up because they were already there. Other school business went to operations. I call that the happy place. And Mr. Snipes, he mentioned something that's very important. And I don't, I didn't get the quote exactly because I'm not auditory and I didn't write it down. But he said, "Change comes with trust, or we can't have change without trust." And I think about that, too, when we're doing listening tours and things like that, that we still have a lot of work to do with building trust. And then I think, you know, the change will come. Ms. Chen is going to, she has volunteered to drive a bus at some point. I understand there's some other board members who have not driven a bus. You don't have to do like five loops like Mr. Riffle. You can just do one. Like I, but they're going to set up another date. So other people that did not get to drive the bus.
Now it's definitely going to happen.
This is happening.
Yeah, come on. Cheer you on.
And you other people that haven't done it can go. Mr. Riffle and I went to J B B, talking again about in your plan about our food services. Chef Seth, in ten minutes whipped up this pasta dish that tastes like if I were at an Italian restaurant. In ten minutes, he was like whipped it up. So that was exciting. We did our Walk for the Hearts as a central office team. We only walked one of three laps, but anyway.
You weren't supposed to admit that.
I am very transparent on things because I've been asked, you know, why are you home so early? Well, so anyway, I do believe, I do believe in transparency. And that's why, you know, sometimes I get a little hot under the collar when we get a lot of complaints about things going on in the school system. And I just want people to know, that's why my comments are very long, that there is a lot more good going on than what we're hearing about the bad. The Parapalooza workshop that the assistants had was phenomenal. It was all football-themed. And I went to the one on navigating an I E P and two on discipline. The discipline ones that T-TAC did were awesome. And what I thought about, this is interesting again on transparency. When we went into two schools, I can't remember, there was a young man who had fallen asleep in band class. And they tuned up and he was still asleep. And I was like, how does he sleep through that? And then there was another young lady that something was going on. And then I thought about this. There are a lot of things our kids are going through at night before they get up in the morning and come to school. And we are always wondering what's wrong with you instead of what happened to you. And I think that that relationship piece, we have to make time to figure out what's going on. And some people just need a power nap. And that could have been exactly what that student needed, was a power nap. But it just reminded me how you can have one child that was just on spot-on and one child is just still thinking about what happened this morning and how am I going to get through this day? And so the brain, all the, what do you call it, information they gave us on brain for our students, that mental health piece plays a lot into discipline. And so it's all interrelated, and I'm happy that we're looking into that. And I just wanted, just to let the viewing public know what impressed me the most, even though I was a teacher for thirty-six years, how hard teachers, staff, everybody in our school system is working harder than they ever have worked before. And we're trying to recruit and retain them. And I'm so glad we're looking at ways to show them how much we appreciate them because they are really, really, really working hard. And I appreciate it. And that's all my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Huntley. Mr. Hosang?
Yes, ma'am. I just first wanted to say happy Veterans Day to all the veterans out there, employees and voters, parents, grandparents, and just say thank you for your service, for keeping our great country free. Today, I attended two Veterans Day performances at Matoka and James River Elementary Schools. And just watching the kids, the excitement in the kids' faces when they're singing the songs and looking out, seeing their families and waving at them, I mean, it was just very, very great to see. Today, again, it's a federal holiday, so I had off. So I asked Beth to give me some school visits, and she loaded me up with four different schools today. So I was on the road constantly. And there's a lot of things I could say about the visits. But the one thing that came across in every visit was the principal knew, I'm not going to say every child or every student in the school, but almost every student that came up, they almost knew everyone's name, gave a fist pump to them. The kids ran up to the principal. They wanted to sit at lunch with them. They wanted to talk with them. And I think to me, that was just such a credit for us in hiring the right people. The people that really cared about the students, and the students could tell that they cared about and someone that they could relate to, someone they could turn to. I can say, I don't remember ever doing that when I was in school. So whether that's good, bad, or different, to me, right now, I think it was great seeing that and seeing the personal connection that the principals had with their students was amazing. And finally, I got a chance to attend the legal club at Matthew Whaley a couple of weeks ago. And I just want to give a shout out to Principal Stutt and Ms. McBee for doing this activity, bringing in William and Mary Law students to talk to the elementary school students. I mean, they did such an amazing job, bringing the topic that we were talking about that day down to their level. I mean, it was basically the different freedoms that we have. And they concentrated on the Bill of Rights and the first ten amendments that we have. And they had scenarios where, I mean, they broke the students out into, I think, six subgroups. And so they, each student then, each William and Mary Law student had a group of students and would talk to them about the issue. Then the elementary students would rotate and they would all have a scenario. So if this happened, how would you feel? Would you think this is good or bad? And then they would relate that back to freedom of speech, freedom of press, freedom of religion, unreasonable searches. And it just brought everything down to this elementary school students' levels. I thought it was a great program. Not to put the William and Mary Law students on the spot, but I would love to see that in other schools. I know it's a thing for Matthew Whaley, and I don't want to step on their toes either. But I mean, the more we can broaden this, especially if we're trying to have a high school course on this now, I think it'd be something that'd be great to do. So.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Mr. Riffle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also have been a busy bee with some friends here in the room. Did the literacy night, which was pretty cool, to see our partners from the regional library and our people at Matthew Whaley. I helped pass out some pizza and hear about, we had a presentation similar to what parents received during our retreat about the literacy curriculum and stuff. And they were asking the same similar questions we were. So it's good to see like that we have an opportunity to kind of engage our parents in that way. And since we're loving storytime and coloring and other stuff they got to do, so this is cool to see. Went to Laurel Lane. I was sorted into one of their houses. So if you go to Laurel Lane, you can spin a wheel like Ms. Chen and I. My team was Philly, Felly Penguins. No, Ms. Chen got the best one. She got macaroni, which was. Then I learned I was also, I was born into like success. My team had won that week. And they said to come back on Friday, so I came by on Friday and got my prize, which I just gave to another student. But it was very cute. It was fun. And it was a good time to go around. And kids like noticed like the little wristbands and stuff. It was like super awesome. And then they had really team effort to like kind of bring us into the fold. Dr. Kavasov and I went to Transportation, and we got to see all the good books there. And got to look at a bus, you know, I don't know if you've ever seen like a bus engine before, but those things are huge. And got to talk to people about the trucks and stuff they're working on. We got to see the history of W J C C on the wall. And this is the impact that Mr. Snipes has had in our division, which is pretty cool, the Wall of Fame and many of the longstanding members of Transportation are in the operations area. It just seems like a really good place to work. And they have cool yellow walls and door frames and stuff, which is very unique to a building. So I went to C B B and J B B, and then I also did Jamestown. And then I was at Matoka and James River today with Mr. Hosang. So it was all and all has been fun. I didn't do it all in one day, so I hope so, Mr. Hosang. But it's been, you know, this is a time where every time we share about these events and stuff, it just points back to like, this is just us briefly going for like an hour, you know, and seeing an impact of our educators, like what we can see. But there's so much that happens every day, and people talk about how awesome our schools are. And it's just great that we get to see like a minute of it, whether it's like through staff, staff and talking to, not only does it make the food, but like every kid knows him. Like, it's like pretty great to know that he is that kind of staple for students, just like the principals and stuff. I'll share a funny story. As I walked into Matoka today, I was wearing this outfit. And someone asked, "Oh, it's Dr. Keever." And I don't know if that's a, I think I should be proud.
Oh, were you going to say, Mr. Riffle? I'm sorry. And I know it's your time.
It's like, no, usually he wears a blue suit, is what I told everyone, you know. And, you know, the teacher laughed and then Mr. Hosang arrived. So it was, it was just what it was. But that just shows how much you've been involved in our schools, I think, you know. Anyone wearing glasses is, excuse me, Dr. Keever. But yes, thank you for your hard work. The presentation was great tonight. And I think, like I had said, if you can't find a place to be a part of what was said in the presentation, I think you're still open to lots of feedback. And that's also the most important part of what you said today. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Chen?
We have been busy, busy in the best of ways. I have so many things written down. But I would just highlight a few. Yes, I am now a proud macaroni penguin, and I am prepared. So I wear this proudly and I keep it with me all the time. And yes, I will second what Ms. Huntley said. I do have my shirt that Mr. Lambusta gave me, but it came with a promise that I drive a bus. So I'm looking at my colleagues. I'm not allowed to call anybody out, but looking at my colleagues around the room. If anybody wants to be my buddy, I like to do. colleagues. I'm not allowed to call anybody out, but looking at my colleagues around the room, if anybody wants to be my buddy, I like to do things together. So I've promised to drive a bus and it will happen. Um, so and I'll wait to wear my shirt when I proudly drive one of our buses. Um, and so that being said, I'm very grateful for um our bus drivers, but just everybody who works in operations and and it it is, I do really love visiting. So that was a a nice visit. Um, and being the season of gratitude, um, today, I just want to say, you know, happy Veterans Day. Um, I did stop by Matthew Whaley Elementary School this morning, so got to participate. Um, or just got to be a part of their celebration. So thank you to the grade three through five choir, um, which included Ms. Alar's um son, um, and Mr. Staley. And um, there was a wonderful presentation in recognition of parents and families and students um with military connections. Um, and yeah, I mean, it's just been it's, it's just been a lovely couple of weeks, um, being in all the, not all the schools, uh, but a lot of the schools, um, seeing uh you know, just novel study, reset rooms, um, math intervention, things that are elevating um the learning and belonging in the classroom. Um, I highlighted some things. I I did get to visit all the high schools, so I just highlighted a few things that were new and different. Um, again, there's so many things that I saw, but at Lafayette, um, we have teachers who are writing curriculum for our multilingual learners. Um, and we have, um, you know, our new principal there, well, not new to us, but you know, um, Mr. Townsend is is really sort of leaning into the Ram Way and there's a common writing language that's happening cross-curricularly. Um, at uh Warhol High School, we we heard, first heard about uh the teacher who really spearheaded uh this new course, judicial review. Um, so we we promised her we'd come back next year and see it in action. Um, at Jamestown High School, we got to see um Student Leadership Academy um in action in their new space. Um, and so, yeah, just to, the last thing I'll say is just to emphasize what Mrs. Hunley said. Our our teachers, our families, our students are working really hard and things are going well. Um, and we are seeing it. That doesn't mean that there isn't room for improvement, which um we've heard tonight. So I thank you, Dr. Kever, and I'm grateful for um the very detailed, um, you know, report, um, taking all the feedback into consideration. You know, in terms of our teachers who are just working really hard. And when I say teachers, I mean, you know, um, aides, staff, support staff as well. I would love for us, the last thing I'll say is I would love for us going into budget cycle to really, really prioritize the compensation study and stipends for our teachers who are going above and beyond. Um, and that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Kavazos?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm gonna second um Mr. Hosang's comments about um thanking all the veterans who've served this country. For me, it's very, having served a long time in the military, I've seen a lot of young men and women really sacrifice a lot for this country. And um, I know everybody's very um cognizant of that. And it's a, it's a wonderful thought to know that this country's um being um protected by a very strong force. Uh, and I don't think it will ever get defeated. And to that end, um, the, I'm gonna talk about the Purple Star designation, which seems to be in the background, but for me, it's very important. Um, now, up to half of our schools now have a Purple Star. Uh, the four more recent um schools are Berkeley Middle, James Blair, Clara Bird and Stonehouse Elementary. And uh, I think it's really impressive that um half of our schools have a Purple Star designation. And that just means a lot. This shows how welcoming and how friendly this community is along with all the other academic achievements we've made. The fact that we've been able to be able to be recognized as a group of people who are welcoming and um friendly and very supportive, because these kids move all the time. Maybe some of us have experienced that, where you move from one community to another. And I really think, and I almost almost makes me want to cry that this division has been so friendly to those kids because that's very, very, very important to them. Um, having experienced it myself. And um, I'm very glad to have the leadership that we have and the senior staff that have done a great job of um welcoming these kids and that being recognized by somebody outside of this group. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kavazos. Ms. Donner?
Um, I, I'm just gonna back us up a little bit more back to Halloween. That was when I was able to do a school visit to Stonehouse um with Mrs. Hunley. And I think what was so amazing was they did Character Day. And so for all the kids to dress up as characters and the staff that day surprised all the, all the kids and the staff dressed, I can't even talk today, dressed up as characters. And just to see the thought that went in, um, lots of playing with the whole six, seven theme. And they had the Uno cards and stuff with the elementary school students. It was really, it was very cute. And just, it it is, like I think Ms. Hunley said and others, there's just so much wonderful things going on in the building. Um, and I think too, the whole veterans theme. So thank you to our veterans here. But um, there is a Marine, a former Marine, who is an elementary school teacher at Stonehouse. And when you think of the the discipline that a Marine brings and into that classroom, I think that is such a unique experience that a lot of kids don't get. And so in listening to the staff talk about um the wonderful things that are happening in that classroom and um I think it's, I I just love how we have embraced having teachers from all walks of life and backgrounds come into our division and really start to give to our students and and provide opportunities for them in ways that um you just, it just, it just contributes to the richness of their experience. Other than that, I think those are most of my comments at this stage. So everything else has been said, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Um, I won't try to drag this out too much longer, but um I have also had some great visits uh since our last meeting at Tuano Middle School, Norge Elementary. I have visited um some manufacturing days at the uh, up in Tuano at a bottle factory, which I never knew how amazingly cool a bottle factory could be and that they produce millions of bottles that go all around the world and it's right here in our town. I, it's very interesting. Um, as well as um at the, up in Tuano, the different uh, they were, kids were introduced to different trades. Um, and it was just very fascinating experience for me, something, a a new exposure to me personally. And I think the exposure in and of itself is is so key, whether whether it's kids um being exposed to what higher education looks like, whether it's kids being exposed to what a trade might look like. Maybe the, maybe some of those, either of those things are something that your family, people in your family hadn't done before. And doesn't mean you can't do that. You know, you just have to know what it is and what it, what that it's out there and what it takes to get there. And so I think one of the main best things we can do as a school division is expose children to as much and as many possibilities and opportunities as possible. Uh, I want to thank, I got wonderful thank you notes from from Mr. Paulson's class at Laurel Lane when I had, after I read to them and they they sent notes and and drew pictures and I read every single one and I loved every single one. They were fabulous. So I want to thank them for taking the time to do that. And then today I attended the Veterans Day Celebration at Clara Bird Baker, which just like everyone else's experience was wonderful. Um, it was just very, it's very moving um to see the children so excited, to see them learning about our military, about our country, and to see the veterans that were there and see what, see them feel honored for their service by by the next generation because that's, that's who they gave their service for. Um, and so I I think it's incredibly important and incredibly special to see, to foster love for our veterans and for this country and our students at a very young age. Um, there are lots of things in our country that need improvement and need work, but you can't really fix or work on something that you don't love. So instilling a love for the country um at an early age, I think is incredibly important. And I was happy to see that. And happy Veterans Day to our veterans, Mr. Hosang, Dr. Kavazos. Are there other veterans in this room? Military, oh, Sanders, happy Veterans Day to you. Uh, military spouses, um, that's almost just as hard. So congratulations. And and of course, military kids. And so it was great to see military kids. Um, I don't know what each school did at C B B. They they played all the different songs and asked the veterans to stand up for their service, but then also family members or kids stood up if if their family's service was called. So that was just really exciting and cute to see some of, some of the little kids stand that attention. So um, it was very moving. Thank you to everyone who took time to put together those programs. I know that's just an additional extra layer of work in some ways. And I, I even heard the principal at C B B talk about, you know, that's teachers giving up instructional time, which means they have to sort of make that up. So there's a whole lot that goes into it, but it's incredibly important and incredibly moving and worthwhile. So thank you to everyone who had to do with that. Um, and I'm probably forgetting things, but I think everyone might want to head home.
Let me just make one quick comment that if you are looking for something to do on Thursday, that our high schools will be having the Night of One Acts at Lafayette. So all three high schools will be sharing their one-act play performance of Lafayette. I believe that starts at six or six-thirty. It's a pretty neat way, I think, to see all three groups uh make their presentation. And I would be remiss. I think drama is phenomenal, but we also have both of our football teams playing in playoffs on Thursday and Friday with the possibility that Warhol might play Lafayette if they both win the following week. So stay tuned, but you may want to but be a huge gate for us. So you gotta look at it, you gotta look at it on the plus side, right?
I saw, I I can um back, I saw uh some of the one acts, like I think we we all missed some of them because we had a board meeting, but um, that would be actually, I really endorse that recommendation because it was phenomenal. So.
If we go to the game, sit on one side first and then sit on the other side. So it doesn't look like we have favoritism as board members.
Unless you're a parent of one school or the other, then then of course you do. Um, alright, we will wrap this up. Our upcoming events, um, we have a Career Ready Advisory Committee meeting on November twelfth at three-thirty P M Warhol, at Warhol High School Media Center. Special Education Advisory Committee, also on November twelfth at five P M in room one oh eight, the School Board and Central Office. And the V S B A Annual Convention is upon us. That is November nineteenth through the twenty-first, all day for all of us at the Williamsburg Lodge. Uh, upcoming meetings, we have um next week, November eighteenth, we have our regular meeting with a public hearing on the C I P. The closed session will begin at six P M. Regular meeting with public hearing on C I P will begin at six-thirty P M, um, both at Berkeley Middle School. The regular meeting is in the auditorium at Berkeley Middle School. We will then have our joint meeting on uh December fifth at eight-thirty A M at Legacy Hall in Newtown. And then our next board meeting is December ninth. Uh, closed session begins at four P M here in room three hundred, followed by work session with action items at four-thirty P M, also here in room three hundred. And our agenda for next meeting is set. And this meeting is adjourned.